Lisa, can you hear us? All right, so we will go ahead and begin. I call this public hearing to order. Something that I've been prepared to read. The board will now convene in accordance with Board Policy KL and Administrative Rule KLR for the purpose of hearing the appeal of a public complaint brought by Ron. Mark Watson, I am the Chair of the Hillsborough School District. The Board has received and has reviewed the lower Mr. Babcock has often also been given an opportunity to submit relevant documents for the Board's review. Before we begin, it is important to set forth the scope of the Board's review in this matter. The Board's responsibility is to review the Step Two decision and determine whether it should be overturned or adopted. In this capacity, the Board serves as an appellate body, not as a fact finder. The Board's consideration will be focused solely on that portion of the complaint that is being appealed. The Board will not be taking witness testimony, and there will be no opportunity to cross-examine the other party. Because we are in open session, please remember to avoid the use of student names or information and to refrain from making criticisms or complaints about specific staff members. The procedure for tonight's hearing will be as follows. The Superintendent says we will first provide a brief description of the procedural history and background related to this complaint. The Complaintant will then have a maximum of fifteen minutes to present information and discussion in support of his position that the Step Two decision should be overturned. Superintendent says we will then have a maximum of ten minutes to present further information. Following the presentation, the Board will have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the participants and will then deliberate. The Board will then take a vote on whether to adopt the Step Two decision or take further action on this complaint. The Board shall also provide written notification of its action within twenty-five days as set forth in KLR. KLAR. Unless there are any other questions, we may proceed. You guys should all have the agenda from the packet, all of the information from the complaint that's available as public in the packet. And I would just add that it feels slightly unusual to me to have our Chief of Resources Officer, Lisa Soff, that this began as a complaint against personnel in the district. So Tana is the most fluent in everything, so don't read anything into the fact that the Board's presentation be presented by Tana. It's not an HR thing, it's just that she is most familiar with the information at this point. So now a personnel complaint is a complaint about a policy procedure. So with that, I think we may begin.
Are we going to have a timer?
Yeah, I think we have a
I plan to, but it's not working.
Okay.
I can run it, I can run it, people run it right here, it just won't be on screen.
Okay.
Ten minutes at the outset, right?
Yeah, ten to fifteen minutes.
Oh, that's where you have to start, okay.
All right. Sorry. All right, good evening, I just want to thank you all for being here tonight and for your time. And as Board Chair Watson shared, I care to give a brief description of the procedural history and background related to this complaint. First, I want to thank Mr. Ron Babcock for waving timelines and his willingness to provide this accommodation during the Step Two investigation process. It is evident that Ron cares deeply for the work that our district does to serve exchange students. And I will be reading, I will be reading prepared information, so as not to miss any details important to this appeal. So prior to starting the investigation, in early February 2022, after Mr. Babcock sent his initial email to Superintendent Mike Scott, I was designated to follow up with him to review the focus of the public complaint. Ron's original complaint was the statement, quote, "Creation of a policy that is designated to be punitive and punish organizations, host parents and students that the administration takes issue with or holds prejudice against that have challenged them in one way or another," end quote. I shared with Ron on February 22 that the complaint I just shared with you would be the focus of my investigation. My role in this investigation would be to determine if the complaint would be substantiated or not based on the information gathered from the investigation. The investigation was formulated to reach a conclusion based on the facts of the investigation, not to justify a foregone conclusion. In terms of determining the scope of this investigation, I wanted to share that over the almost eight years that I have served in HR, I have conducted many investigations and I have developed comprehensive and a robust approach. It is vital to conduct a thorough, fair, and consistent investigation in a structured and systematic manner, such as deciding open-ended questions to afford people the opportunity to freely express their thoughts and experiences. These are often hard and difficult situations, and my role is to make sure people are heard through an investigative process with some concerns with care and respect. Additionally, confidentiality of the process is also vital, sharing that with both involved. Per legal counsel, it was determined that this complaint would be completed at Step Two of the public complaint process. In terms of the investigation, between February 9 and March 4, 2022, I interviewed ten different people, and some folks were interviewed multiple times to gather information to this allegation. In addition, I reviewed all of the ninety-plus pages of the complaint and the attendants, as well as the hundred and ninety pages of written transcriptions and meeting notes from the investigation. During my meetings with Ron, which has come past almost four hours, I listened and asked questions for clarification. I wanted to better understand the complaint and let him share his perspective. I determined it was first vital for me to gather information on the background of the policy and the administrative rule for the admission of foreign exchange students in our district to better understand the updates and the implementation of it. So let us take a moment to look at the background knowledge that kind of has brought us here. And so when the pandemic hit in March of 2020, three targeted concerns were brought forward by our high schools. One, supporting exchange students to return to their home country safely in a timely manner. We had to work in a moment's notice to have students return to their home countries. Supporting the unknown mental health needs of our exchange students, as well as supporting the unknown health needs of our current students population due to the effects of the pandemic. I think it's also important to make note that the hope was not to put undue stress on our foreign exchange students, host families, and district staff in an already stressful environment situation. High schools reported that a primary factor with foreign exchange students were not enrolled in the 2122 school year was related to the pandemic and due to concerns for currently enrolled students. During the pandemic and living in a crisis mode, it was vital for us to take care of our existing students and staff. We as a district recognize the mental health needs of students and the on-track graduation needs of high school students need a much higher level of support than we originally planned. Additionally, in terms of the background, based on these various reasons, it was determined to repeat back from the high schools to the Office of School Performance that a comprehensive study of a metro area district's administrative rules and the admission of foreign exchange students needed to take place. The Office of School Performance reviewed about fifteen different administrative rules. There was variances in the ARs across the metro area. After careful consideration, it was determined that utilizing and aligning some of the ideas from the different districts would help create continuity for the district-wide of the core competence of high schools. During my investigation, I discovered that the administrative rules are often very specific to the districts in how they implement a policy which affords some variance and some things that are consistent in nature or timelines and procedures. Next, the Office of School Performance sought feedback with various stakeholders at the high school level and exchange student agencies. I want to note that Ron was one of the coordinators who OSP sought feedback from as the updates to the AR were being adjusted. Now I would like to take a seat to my conclusions and findings of my investigative summary. When I'm conducting interviews for my designated step of a public complaint, my job is to listen, understand the situation, and review the concerns and allegations brought forward. Throughout the entire process, the integrity of the process was utmost to preference, which I then consistently consulted with district league counsel and Superintendent Scott each step of the way. This ensured checks and balances of a thorough, fair, and comprehensive investigation. I'd like to take us back to Ron's original complaint in which he stated, quote, "Creation of a policy that is designated to be punitive and punish organizations, host parents and students that the administration takes issue with or holds prejudice against that have challenged them in one way or another." After reviewing all the investigative findings, there is no evidence to support that the AR was designed to punitive or punish organizations, host parents or students that the administration takes issue with or hold prejudice against that have challenged them in one way or another. Additionally, I want to share in my findings that the AR was updated in a way that all foreign exchange students have fair, equitable opportunity to be admitted through a lottery that the number exceeds the district's designated amount of openings that is not to exceed one-half of one percent of students enrolled. During my last meeting with Ron prior to the implementation of the AR, I shared that the Office of School Performance needs the opportunity to implement the AR, then seek feedback from agencies to make adjustments as needed. During the initial complaint for Mr. Babcock issued in early February 2022, the AR had not been implemented as it was to be done so at the end of March for the timeline. Contrary to Ron's claims, a centralized process and considering exchange students would eliminate potential favoritism and inconsistent application. In addition, as the AR was updated in December of 2021, high schools shared that the new updates better align with the timelines of district staffing and the course capital. So I'd like to come to the conclusion. I recognize that this is a very personal matter for Ron in advocating for exchange students, as he is very invested in supporting them as a host parent and one of the coordinators for the Situ's exchange program. Everyone who was interviewed shared common goals in wanting to support exchange students who come to the Hillsborough School District. And all involved were very excited to have exchange students be a part of the high schools in the coming 22, 23 school year. definitive evidence shows that high schools and the Office of School Performance worked to create an AR that will be, that will address the concerns that streamline, centralize, and syphonize the process of the admission of exchange students in a fair and equitable manner. It's clear that the intent was to alleviate the impact of schools during a time needed to work with each individual. So to alleviate the impact that high schools would have to work with each individual company and request and put their focus in supporting enrolled exchange students. During my investigation, I found that time and time again, everyone came from a spirit of genuine care and determining the need to make adjustments to the admission of exchange students, especially during the pandemic. This was based on reflecting on the needs of students as well as current resources. So in conclusion, there is no evidence to substantiate Mr. Babcock's claims. And truly, it is unfortunate that we are here at this point. I would defer to Board Chair Watson to an extent.
Babcock disagrees with that conclusion as appealed to the Board level. Mr. Babcock, you have fifteen minutes to present any information you'd like to
Good evening, Chair Watson, Vice Chair Thomas, fellow Board members, Superintendent Scott, and other administrative leaders. I would like to thank you for providing time to hear this grievance and review the material provided before you. During my time this evening, I'm not going to prove that this policy was written with punitive intent, however, intended to show that the policy can be used as a punitive tool towards community members and exchange student programs. This policy also allows the district to change the parameters of the policy at will, discriminating against families, students, or organizations due to a complete lack of policy definitions or procedures. History shows that any policy or system set up with the potential to be abused will be abused at some point in time. It's a matter of if, it's not a matter of if, but when it will happen. At this point, I would like to begin by talking about my first experience interacting with Hillsborough School District. My wife and I arrived in Oregon on July 5th of 2022 years ago. The following day, my wife had an interview with Jackson School Elementary for a full-time teaching position. The morning of the interview, I woke with some mild tooth pain and likely results from incomplete dental work that was started before moving. While traveling to Oregon, we had to cross through several mountain ranges which appeared to aggravate the two, one tooth in particular. Having only one vehicle at the time, my wife, and my wife not knowing the area well, I had previously lived in Oregon, I drove my wife to New York. Approximately halfway through the interview, I asked for the front desk assistant if they had any aspirin as my pain had melted mild. The front desk assistant noticed swelling in my face and noticed and decided to interrupt the interview, noting that I was in a lot of pain and needed to see as intense as possible. One of the individuals on interview panel was the president of the Parents' Association, and her husband was a dentist. At this point, the interview was stopped while she made a call to her husband who gave up his lunch hour to see me. After the appointment was scheduled, the interview committee restarted the interview. However, to accommodate the situation, they all piled into cars, followed us, moving the interview to the lobby of the dentist office so my wife could be there to assist or grab the food. It was determined that needed a root canal, and her husband cleared part of his schedule that day, completing the root canal, eliminating pain resulting issue. The interview committee understood the circumstances, and instead of writing off my wife's interview and moving to another candidate, they showed compassion, integrity, willingness to help. My wife was offered the position of Jackson Elementary shortly after the interview started her current twenty-one-year career with the Hillsborough School District. This was our first interaction with the school district, and compassion, integrity, willingness to help, community involvement, and assistance made us not only feel accepted by the community, but the district as well. Sadly, it is this type of leadership, compassion, and community involvement that I and many others feel has embedded over the years between community and Hillsborough School District administration. Based on my interactions and discussions with other community members, the administration now appears to be less willing or unwilling to listen or ask for community input when it comes to writing the school policy. An email with three questions directed at the narrative you're trying to achieve does not constitute community outreach. During this time, the administration has become more likely to create policies that either limit or exclude any or all administrative responsibility, yet appear to put all responsibility on teachers, students, families, and community involvement. Thankfully, for the community and students, interactions with teachers, assistants, or personnel have all continued to show high levels of compassion and empathy and understanding. They go above and beyond on a daily basis to communicate with families, students, and students to help resolve problems and create a sense of community for all residents and residents. I would like to try and be one of potentially many steps needed to bring this type of empathy and compassion to community involvement that originally extended my family back to the Hillsborough School District. But I and a former regional director of Situ's have offered assistance with creating a better exchange student policy using knowledge of how they work, timelines, expectations, etc., with no reciprocal outreach by the school district community. We are a community and schools are the heart of community. Exchange students and the families that host them help bring not only schools and students, but the community together during an exchange of knowledge and culture that cannot be achieved through classroom teaching or travel. It is this reason that I have achieved pursuit changes to this policy regardless of where we present it. In the information I sent to the school board for reading on Friday, April 15, that listed ninety-nine questions or concerns on six policy statements. These questions sort of pointed out how this policy, community, exclusionary, discriminatory, incomplete, can be used on unethical or illegal matters. So the first form that I would like to, and I sent this out yesterday, so I'll have to admit it to you or not, is a school acceptance form. And so what I would like to do is address areas of the policy that can be used as punitive, discriminatory, or anything unethical. And so this is the school acceptance form that our agency uses. On the bottom is a signature. And part of it is completed by the agency or the coordinator, part of this, by the school counselor, and it has to be signed by a principal or approved member. So this school acceptance form, and it, this, so it has to be signed before a placement can be completed. Without this form, we can't complete a placement, a placement student cannot be placed within a period. Principals can delay the signing of this school acceptance form until after the district imposes July 1st deadline. This would result in preventing a family or organization from being able to enroll a student, thus denying their placement. This type of delay has already occurred in the new policy. Placements were approved and school acceptance forms were sent to be signed by the district principal. The program was assured by the executive director of high schools that the appointment be signed and sent back by April 1st, April 1st came and went, and no signed school approval form was left. It was just a simple signature by the principal that was needed and not signed until the following year. This can be used in a punitive manner by laying the signature, making the program miss the second one of the page. The second form is this form, and this is Hillsborough's form. And this is their exchange student application cover sheet checklist. Read on it, it has one, so through the top part, completed applications must be received by July 1st to be considered for the following year. And two, all required elements of this application must be approved to be considered complete. The third line down, exchange student J1 visa number and expiration date. This new form could instantly eliminate many students from enrollment based on J1 expiration date. There is no exceptions provided in this policy. Most students will not apply for the visa, the visa until mid-July after the enrollment window has closed. Our Spanish student that has already been accepted has already stated mid-July is the timeline set up by her Spanish organization. So this is already after this, so they're already basically denying this student. Most students have to travel a long way to get their visas, so their agency sets up dates after school has ended, so the students are, while the students are on some break. Our former Australian student had to fly from Adelaide to Sydney to get their visa. Another former Spanish student had to fly three hours from the Canary Islands to Madrid to get their visa. So they have to set these up later in the summer, whereas we have a self-imposed July 1 deadline. This creates exclusion or elimination through the enrollment process. It can be used in punitive manner to eliminate students from enrolling and punish families because the information couldn't be provided to the district within a period of time. The extremely narrow enrollment window requiring forecasting by March 15 and full enrollment by July 1. Most programs don't even start recruiting new host families until March or April. So this is even before the forecasting, which is all we're doing is forecast. The U.S. State Department allows enrollment up to August 31st. We can enroll students all the way up to August 31st before you do a student form. This discriminates against families that decide to host after July 1. The first student my family hosted wasn't placed until the first week of August in 2014, which would have not happened had this policy been in place. Limited and undefined enrollment with a maximum of 0.005% student population. This is punitive towards families that decide to host after all spots have been filled. This is also punitive towards students that currently request Hillsborough as the destination city. Currently, at least one Italian student has requested to be placed in Hillsborough. Based on this policy, this student may not be able to attend school here unless a host family can be found before July 1 or slots available or slots are still available. So you could eliminate somebody who actually wants to come to school here in this town based on its policy. A lottery is never equitable and can be used to discriminate against programs from placing students. Again, any system set up with the potential to be abused will be abused. Placements could be brought under the correct, or placements could be bought under the correct conditions through donations to the school and direct payments to individuals conducting lottery, denying exchange students, exchange student programs access to enrollment of students through the lottery. There's no explanation of how lottery can be conducted. If enough slots per year are requested by an organization and automatically sends all programs to the lottery, programs could be excluded for years before being able to place a student if they are not selected. This is punitive towards programs, creates potential illegal and unethical situations. Final student placement is at the discretion of the executive director of high schools. There is no explanation of how placements for students will be accepted or denied. This clause can be used as punitive towards both families and programs through denial of enrollment with no formal guidance in place. This policy allows the administration to limit the number of students from any country, creating a discriminatory practice towards countries around the world through a desire to balance placements. This is a discriminatory enrollment practice. So there is a quote generally attributed to World War II General Omar Bradley that states, "Amateurs talk strategy, professionals talk logistics." I would amend this to state amateurs focus on policy, professionals focus on procedures. This is the difference between focusing on what you want to accomplish instead of how you are going to accomplish it. The original standard intent of creating a new policy was that this previous policy was confusing. However, the policy that they created is more confusing. Adding new forms, the programs have not been notified about, so nobody, none of the programs agreed to notify this form was in existence. I found it on the website, notified my local coordinator, so they knew about it. So you haven't even disseminated the information about this policy yet to programs. So you've added new forms that you haven't notified programs about. It adds extra confusing steps with no explanation of how the policy works, does not take any additional workload off school counselors, principals, or support staff like it is intended to do or stated that it was going to do. Without writing down expectations for all parties involved, the policy is punitive and completely confusing, exclusionary, and discriminatory. The district can change expectations of this policy at will to fit yearly narratives without ever notifying programs or families of the changes. The policy wording of male enrolled students was used this year to deny the enrollment of exchange students for the entire 2122 academic year, giving Hillsborough School District the distinction of being the only district in the region potentially distinct to deny enrollment of exchange students. Other schools may not have hosted exchange students, but we're not denying them. At a minimum, they accepted second semester students. School districts such as Portland Public Schools even admitted out-of-district exchange students with one living in Bearden for a full-year placement. There was an expectation of second semester enrollment within the Hillsborough School District, something that was discussed in a Zoom meeting at the former executive director of high schools. This denial of enrollment resulted in agreements filed with the Department of Education for discriminatory enrollment practices and is still under review awaiting consultation with the Department of Justice. It also resulted in my family having to move two students we were hosting who were attending a very small private school in Hillsborough due to the semester. They had to be rehoused in Bearden School District, which did accept second semester students. When the students went to register for class, the principal met both students to tell them how excited they were to have exchange students in the school again, and gave them a personal tour of the school. This is a very different response from what they received from the Hillsborough School District. This process grew up a very strong bond that had been built up over five months and created a perpetual strain of what was amazing relationships. This policy allows for discrimination, exclusion, and misuse of punitive measures with a complete lack of accountability by school administrators. I would like to close with this. It is my hope that the school board will take all information into consideration to help create not only a better policy, but work toward helping, helping the Hillsborough School District take a lead role in creating a positive, inclusive, comprehensive foreign exchange student program that other districts around the state will want to model their programs after. I again would like to thank all of you for giving me the time to present my grievance review.
Babcock, sorry again, we couldn't get your new documentation as part of the public record. Apparently, the other on our site.
Yeah, well, this one is on your site, this one's on our official site. Well, company for every, every exchange program has to have.
All right. All right, so we have allocated ten minutes for the district's response, and I think you're gonna share that time with several of you, so. You're ready.
All right, so in response to what has been shared tonight, I want to recognize that there are many areas of this complaint that are subject to litigation by the parties involved. However, there is definitive evidence that the changes to the AR for the policy JDCBA admission information was not updated to be exclusionary, discriminatory, or an extra collection disclaimer. The facts of the investigation indicate the purpose of the update were to accomplish three goals, consistent processes, systems, and structures for the admission of exchange students across all four comprehensive high schools. Make clear timelines for high schools and exchange program organizations to better align with staffing and course capital. Third, to identify one person at our district office who oversee the admission of the exchange students at the district level. Additionally, our district has been contacted by OBE regarding the complaint that Ron issued at the state level, and they have shared they're not accepting his complaint based on the concerns that were issued prior to the AR being implemented. They shared that his concerns would be considered theoretical at this time. I would like to turn it over to Ms. Spitzer and Sir Carlos to have a chance to share regarding the implementation of the I would like to turn it over to Ms. Spitzer and Sir Karol to have a chance to share regarding the implementation of the mission.
Just wanted to talk a little bit about the change in the AR. The policy actually has not changed. This has been a policy that's been in place for a couple of years, just with some minor updates in two thousand and nineteen. But most districts have a number of students that they will accept. In our policy, it says that exchange student placements will not exceed one half of one percent, and that's been language that we've had in there for quite some time. Additionally, the policy talks about that an effort will be made to achieve a balanced representation of international cultures and improving placements. And again, that's part of our policy that's been there for a while. We have longstanding relationships with many companies over thirty two of the last ten to fifteen years that we've worked with. And we really welcome exchange students in our school communities. In updating the AR, basically this came from multiple conversations with principals and counselors about the impact and the process of accepting exchange students. Prior to the change in our AR, exchange students would directly reach out to counselors, some of whom they have relationships with or administrators, and seek to get opportunities to have the form signed so that they can begin working on on the placement of their students. And we really felt like that wasn't equitable, it wasn't transparent. And sometimes when we had some agencies who had relationships, they received more opportunities to place their students than others. So we really wanted to streamline that process. So we did look at different districts' policies and we made a couple of changes to our AR. Specifically, you'll see in step two hundred program guidelines where we set some dates. Again, these dates came from looking at other districts' policies as well as soliciting input from some of the agencies that we work with. And also just making sure that one person, specifically our executive director of schools that worked directly with high schools, would be the person who would kind of oversee the process and support the principals and the teams in implementing this AR, making sure that the students were able to get enrolled in the school. I think the important thing is, is I appreciate your, your story about compassion and integrity and and the willingness to be a part of a larger community. And we all were very sad that we couldn't accept exchange students over the last couple of years. We just really, after having no school during the twenty one, or the twenty twenty one school year in comprehensive distance learning, we noticed patterns of our own students in terms of mental health, students that were not completing classes on time. And so we just really wanted to make sure that we could prioritize our community students before welcoming guests to our communities. As we started the twenty one, twenty two school year, we made it clear to everyone that until we knew what was happening with our students and how we were able to support them, that we would not be considering exchange students for this year. But we were hopeful that perhaps mid-year, as you recall, mid-year Omicron kind of surfaced, and there were a lot of needs, including substitute issues and such, and we just felt like the impact would be too great on our schools. So we chose not to welcome guest students this last year, but we're looking forward to next year, and I'm gonna hand it off to Mr. Carapelli, who will talk about the process.
On February second, we reached out the email to thirty two exchange organizations and March fifteenth for receive information from them on the number of slots or students they would like to place in our schools. We received information back from several organizations for a total of twenty slots by our deadline of March fifteenth. Students were from five different countries of those twenty slots. Several of the companies asked for, didn't have specific students in mind, but they said we'd like five slots at these schools and will fill them over time as we have students. And we said absolutely. So we were able to accommodate all twenty of those requests. We received an additional request from one of the organizations shortly after the deadline asking if we still had places. In consultation with our principals prior to the enrollment window, principals in turn, they'd be able to accept up to six students each for their high schools, for a total of twenty four. So we were able to accept all of the twenty one requests for placements. I'd be an email the first Monday of spring break, which was on March twenty first that their replacements were accepted. And yes, Mr. Babcock is absolutely right. I had said that I would get the confirmation letters for those five students signed by the Friday of the week after spring break, which was April first. And we sent them on Monday, April fourth. I do apologize for the delay of the media. Yes, and in October, we will send out a survey to all the directors of the programs that we worked with and the ones that are on our list as well with feedback on the limitation.
I just want to say if there are any questions regarding the report, my investigation process, I'm happy to answer those, but I would prefer to.
The next thing we've allocated is time for questions from board members, so. Prior to that spent with some of us here in some remotely is Director Allen, if you have any questions, we could begin there. If any come up, just try to flag or get our attention as we're going.
I don't have questions. Maybe now, I don't have questions yet.
Anybody in the room have any questions they would like to ask of Mr. Babcock or the administrative team?
I do have a question. Mr. Babcock, is your, the company that you represent, is that one of the thirty two? So this is a five question, if you will. Is your company one of the thirty two that was indicating that we reached out to ask for the upcoming year?
So we are one of the thirty two. There's approximately fifty organizations nationwide, and there's about thirty, I guess thirty two in the state.
So, so you did respond? Or did you respond to that?
Well, I did not respond because I'm not planning on placing anybody this year.
Okay.
The coordinator that places our students did do that because the coordinator was the regional director, but it stepped down to that position.
So your organization is not placing anyone for the upcoming year?
No, they are. So they, they had five slots that I think were asked for.
I think what he's saying is his organization is, but he personally is.
Yes, I am not personally asking for.
His organization has a broad reason.
Got, okay, so we have a total of twenty one. That have been accepted for the upcoming school year.
Sutuza, this back house organization, requesting eight slots.
Total twenty one.
Total of twenty one, eight went to Sutuza.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Babcock. Is the nature of your complaint, are you, is this a complaint from your agency or just from you?
This is personal.
It's a clarifying question around the changes. And I know you said there were no changes to the policy, but there were changes to the AR and to the processes of how we implement.
Yeah, so the administrative rule is really the process that we use to enact our policy. Yeah, so there, there are steps in here in terms of Mr. Care Pebbles' work with the schools and the deadlines and the timelines for requesting slots.
And I know that there was a change in the form though, but is that or not changing?
No change in the forms. The forms have been the same. And Nikki King Smith has been kind of a key contact for agencies, working both with new agencies and standing agencies and is a facilitator of using those forms if they're challenging or if they have a different form that they're using with their, their host country.
So the, the, just to also have clarity on the complaint on the actual policy, not on the AR or execution.
It was, I believe it was more focused on the administrative rule versus the policy, because the policy didn't change. It's the administrative rule that changed. But the language in the complaint is the policy.
I think, as I understand it, the current complaint we are considering is whether or not the AR, as it was changed, violates the policy that did not change, or whether or not the AR violates state law. Like both, right? Like you were concerned about, I think that was.
I'm sorry, Dale, I do have a, just two other questions. One question is, have we ever received a complaint associated and or anywhere close to this level of a complaint from any of the other companies that we have engaged with to place students in our district? Second question. Is there room for us to have a discussion or to have a work session with whomever writes the AR? The same AR is, is subject to everybody, all of the districts that, quite frankly, it's a statewide AR, is it ours?
It's ours.
It's ours. So what I'm getting to is, are we open to looking at our AR?
Yeah, like Mr. Carapelli was saying, at the end of October, our intention is to reach back out to these companies and ask them about how their experience was.
Okay, so that is the intent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Questions from board? So just a couple of clarifying things. I've been, y'all have had the weekend with Sutuza, I've been with much longer. Being board chair takes up a lot of time. I thought it was just my turn, Director Allen. As part of the documentation, Mr. Babcock shared some communications he had with the Oregon Department of Education. So I want to make sure that I'm clear. I don't think that's the resolution that's in the documentation that we have, but I want to make sure I do understand that that has been resolved correctly, like either one of you want to address. At last, it seemed like the last thing was the Oregon Department of Education was asking the Department of Justice for clarification on whether or not anything had been violated. I don't know that the documentation contains the resolution of that.
I didn't receive documentation from the Oregon Department of Ed, just a call to say that they would be moving forward to process the complaint based on conjecture of things that could be happening because the AR hadn't been implemented at that time in the timeline when Mr. Babcock So they just, as a part of following up, Mr. Babcock asked me to follow up with O E. And so through that follow-up conversation, I believe that information, that there was no report or no written communication to the district regarding that, it was just through that follow-up conversation. I have no Mr. Babcock was received.
Yeah. Sorry?
So I had not received any information from the Department of Education, or I do try and contact individuals today.
So, and so what's your sort of understanding of where your complaint, your Oregon Department of Education is today?
At the same place it was the last time.
Which is what?
Which is that it is still under review and they're still waiting for consultation with the Department of Justice. They have not contacted me in any, contacted me since the last time. And that was the last word that they gave.
So you are not aware of the fact that they had called us?
Okay, that's fair. Okay, so you turn, just to make sure I understand, right? It's question based.
Well, and I will say that that is a very different piece than this policy that I followed in the experience of that. But it was the actions that took place for the non-enrollments of students this last year, especially second semester students. That's why that was, that complaint was filed with the department.
All right. Thank you for that. So this is, just to be clear again, policy not change, the AR changed for this particular school year, year we're currently in now. Or no, it would be the upcoming year, right? We're currently in the process of figuring out who's going to be our exchange student for the upcoming year. All of the requests made under the current AR were honored. That's correct. So every, everyone who requested to place a student, Mr. Babcock's concern about individual visas and things like that. Those timelines, I guess, would be, so, because we have several, more than one, several agencies that generally place born exchange students that have requested slots, but have not identified specific students. Is that, is it just?
That's correct.
Ones or?
Seven organizations requested slots. And we've received the information and resigned the acceptance form six, seven, eight students.
Oh, so there's another?
There's the, the, the companies know they have the slots and they, in their process, they'll give us the information, will sign forms.
So twelve, thirteen more students will be coming to get to twenty one. Okay, yes. All right, and then, so that did any of the organizations indicate a difficulty with having the visa information resolved by Jan, July first or whatever?
That's my knowledge, no. I've received any information concerning about anything around this.
Okay, all right. What we are reviewing is the step two K L complaint, and so that that's not a question.
Right statement.
Yeah. As we are reviewing step two, the step two conclusions, and we didn't really hear anything about the step one conclusion. So there must have been step one conclusions, and then those were repealed. Is it safe for us to assume that the step one conclusions result mostly around personnel issues, which are no longer being addressed as part of this complaint? So it must, was there a step four? So we haven't heard much about step one. Okay, I'll require the step one, then a step two, then a board. I'm trying to sort of understand why we're not hearing about step one, and if it's part of the confidential information that we're not wrapped up in anymore. That's cool, I go with one small clarification.
I believe that's the case because it became, there were personnel issues that were brought forward. And because of those personnel issues, it was determined that we needed to make it a step two. So sometimes we will step beyond step one and it's a step two. So that's why.
Oh, so there really was no sort of step one violation, it was like this appears like the thing we should address, right, and step two?
Yeah, when it became a formal complaint that you issued, you had to make that interpretation. And that's why, in terms of checks and balances, we consult with the council to make that decision.
Right, okay. For those of you who may not, Brian doesn't join us every day, so just, this is our legal concept, you haven't had him for a while. Sorry, I should have maybe shoot the outset my dollars. We spent too much time together already.
Mark, I do have another question.
Yeah, sure.
It's with regard to the anticipated review of the AR. Can you say at this point, if you will be considering the community, other school districts, apparently, thank you, Mr. Babcock, for including a number of other schools, or to what he interprets that they do. Will he be having any conversation with them to consider how they're, to understand exactly what they do? Is that part of the process that you're willing to consider?
Yeah, that, that was already part of the process in the change in our current AR. We reached out to almost fifteen different schools.
That's what I wanted to.
However, we always want to learn from each other. So of course, that would be part of.
And, and I have a question for you, Mr. Babcock. I, first of all, want to say that I I'm sorry that you feel so aggrieved that we had to come to this point. As a fellow resident and fellow parent in this district, I would like to think that everyone will be treated as they should be as a human person with respect and kindness. My question is, are there other people that you are aware that feel like you do?
So I'm not aware of anybody because I don't have, I'm type of programs. But at the same time, I'm not sure that most programs are even aware of the fact that they're not going to be able to get their visas in time to meet this July first deadline. Because again, my program and, again, my coordinator, who was the regional director, didn't even know this page existed until I pointed it out. Because the school hasn't notified any of the programs that this form even exists. So people don't even know it. I just happened to do my research and looked on the website and found it. Nobody else is doing that at this point in time that I can tell, because we don't contact the other. I couldn't even tell you who the other.
So you believe in your heart that our, that we have never conveyed. So you believe in your heart that our, that we have never conveyed this information to the other 32 people that need help?
Well, they didn't convey it to the 26, I can tell you that. And they are one of the 32 organizations, so.
Can, can you guys confirm for us, what did that happen? I mean.
The policy J E C B A, which hasn't been changed.
Is it that form?
No, no, the policy, our district policy, students must apply for admission by July. And that is in the policy that has not changed. And there is no intention to use that to exclude students.
Okay.
This has been in policy as far as prior to minding in the district and exchange students having accepted.
Can you tell the board that all of the companies that we've agreed to play students, that they are aware of that deadline?
I don't know that they are aware of that deadline. It's in the policy, it doesn't change. We certainly can make them aware of it.
Okay, so can you confirm for me that all of those companies have been given our policy recently?
The policy didn't change.
Yeah, doesn't matter that it didn't change. The question is, we're here, we're now. And the question is, if we're having this relationship and we've accepted their students, do they know all of our policies?
Could it be safe to assume that somebody seeking to place a student in the district would be aware of the policy of the district that they're going to place?
Yes, and, and again, Becky King Smith is one of our key contacts for the companies. And these are longstanding relationships with these companies. There was one new company that started this year that she was working with specifically. But when we had this change in the AR, we did send letters to every single company, letting them know the timeline in the AR and letting them know that they could reach out, either Becky King Smith or Executive Director Carapello for support or clarification. Because we don't want to miss any opportunity for a company to miss a deadline. Because again, that was new, you know, up until this point, it was individual companies working with individual schools. It was very unclear about who to contact, or who to provide, who would provide their support. So none of those processes have changed. It really, the big difference in our AR is around the dates. So that we're more consistent and more clear in bringing it out of the school's hands and providing consistent support and clarity at the district level.
So just to go back to Mr. Babcock and the point about the form. So that one was out, is that new to the policy or to the AR?
Neither.
So this has been in existence for a span of time?
As long as I can remember, yeah. And again, this is one of those pieces that Becky King Smith and her role as secondary teaching learning coordinator will work with the company regarding that enrollment of a student. This is what standard practice at a school level.
Okay, and then what, for clarification, what's the purpose of this form? Is for their visa or?
Well, there's two forms. One, one is the one that, that the company themselves use in terms of like the contact of the parent and what have you. And the other one is just the, the agreement in terms of that partnership between the host family and the street. One is, one is to be signed off for the, has the J one visa number on it. That allows us to enroll the student in our school.
So that form needs to be back to the school? I guess I'm losing where the form comes in, in the timeline of July post, that's what.
Yeah, so when a, when a family goes to register or a host family comes to register a student at the school level, then the school says, oh, you were an exchange student, you've been approved by the district. And then they work with the individual school to make sure they have all the documentation that they need in order to enroll the student. So they work directly with the, the counselors of the schools. And those forms are here at the, at the school.
Lisa, I may have a question online.
I have some comments. First, I want to say that I.
Lisa, we're going to be, as soon as we answer all the questions, we'll do deliberations and comments. Is that, so if you have a question?
Oh, no, I don't have a question. I'm ready to make my comments.
Okay, one, one second. Anybody else have any other questions? Erica?
I guess, since, since going back to the document of a form, it's been there, it hasn't changed. So it hasn't precluded in the past people from entering into the process because they, they get those documents taken care of once the student is involved in that or accepted and is going to register, which is part of one additional documentation.
Correct.
And then the other question that I was wondering, when we asked if you engaged with other districts to see what the ARs were, did you also do any outreach to the organizations that do this work around the changes to the AR to get some feedback?
Yes, yeah, prior to writing it, we had heard that just dates and timelines. A lot of other ARs have dates and timelines. And so I reached out, I don't know, I want to say it was like February or March, and asked like, what are the most important, you know, what would help you place students in our district? What are the things that might support a good partnership? So I asked some of the questions and then was able to give their feedback in looking at other districts' protocols to create an AR. And ask the principals and pass for them, so. Just a question of clarity, is this the first time we're accepting or we're going through this path of reviewing and accepting foreign exchange students since the AR was entered in? Yes.
Yeah, first year of the new AR.
Yeah.
All right, thank you all for answering our questions and for presenting your material. Thanks, Mr. Babcock, for being so prepared and ready to go. So now the final stage of the process is for board deliberation. So Lisa, you actually like to do some comments, that'd be great. Sorry about the interruption.
That's okay, I guess I could have phrased my comments as a question, which first would just be a clarification that our job specifically at the board level tonight is to determine whether or not the AR, J E C B A, AR violates our policy, J E C B A, or violates Oregon revised statutes or Oregon administrative rules. Is that correct?
That is not how I understand it. It's a subtle difference, but it is a difference. Our, our job is not to investigate whether or not they are, our job is to determine whether or not the second level decision saying that it did not violate the policy, it did not violate state law is accurate. So we're not, we're not determining whether or not the VR violates policy or violates state law. We are determining whether or not the second level decision was accurate in saying that they didn't or whether, so we either adopt the findings of the second level or we can ask for further work to be done.
Okay, so it's not necessarily our job to say if we think that the AR could use some work necessarily. So I, I just thought that that was an important clarification to make. Thank you. And then I would say, in the materials that we were given, over 100 pages of correspondence, as well as the previous version of the AR, the current version of the AR, I mean, reading the two Oregon revised statutes referenced in the AR as well as the Oregon administrative rule, I, I have not seen evidence in that packet nor have I heard anything tonight that would, we would to believe that the decision was incorrect. I believe that the decision was aligned with all of those things and we should probably uphold that step two decision. And that being said, I will say that I also passionately believe in the inclusion of foreign exchange students. As a teacher, I love having them in my classroom. I have a bunch this year in my high school where I teach in a different district and it is a joy and a thrill. So I'm very excited for us to welcome them into our district as soon as possible. And I would love to encourage the administration to perhaps be flexible at that timeline when the future of it is going to present a hardship. That being said, I would be a very specific and narrow job tonight. And, and I intend to support the decision of the original step two decision in the investigation. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I would suggest that, yeah, it is our job at some point to discuss whether or not the AR could use some work, but that's not the job of tonight, right? Does anybody else have anything that they want to add as far as deliberation? So we will have, we will have a motion and take a vote when we're all done. So somebody else have any, like, so Lisa explained how she intended votes, anybody else have any color or information they would like to share?
Yeah, I guess I would also add that I understand our, our narrow framework of what we're smoking at to uphold or decide whether there's evidence that we want to appeal that decision and do some more work. But I, I also feel like it is not just on our staff to do the work of the AR, but maybe also as a board to look at this policy again. And I know we did a big revision in 2019, but just taking some time in our schedule to maybe think about looking at this policy if there's any changes as a board that we can see to improve the direction that then we give our staff at a later time. I understand, like our school, as we just said, it's just around the upholding or deciding need to proceed with a different.
Anybody else that I need to want to add?
Um, I just wanted to say that I have a great appreciation for foreign exchange programs and have been in several countries in which many of these students come from. And I actually tried to do it. I actually did it for a short period of time. We actually did it with those students. More importantly, what I would like to say is that when you all engage in that review in October, that I'm volunteering right now to be a part of that. So that you're not by yourself, and we will have some, and I'm happy to bring it back to the board and to share that information. But the more perspective you have on something like this, so that we can avoid anyone feeling to the extent that Mr. Babcock feels right now, we should try to make that happen. So I just wanted to make sure that I put that on record and I look forward to working.
Somebody else that I'd like to share?
I have a question, just about, because you had mentioned that our job is to decide to uphold the step two decision or that it would be further work or something.
Yeah, the language would be reject step two decision, which doesn't necessarily mean it's wrong, but that, the, that the issue in question about whether or not it violates the policy would be investigated further. Anybody else? So I, part of the reasons I will share that I've been with this for a little bit longer when it was a personnel complaint was when I first became involved. And we thought we were going to be in this executive session. So this is the first time anyone can really remember doing this in public session and being very, I appreciate everybody being very careful not to violate the confidentiality of any particular person or entity that may have been involved earlier in the complaints. Thank you, Mr. Babcock, for that, and thank you to our team for that. And at some point, you know, there was debate with Mr. Hungerford about whether or not this is even, without the personnel component, it's not even really a KL complaint anymore in some way. So, but it seemed important to me for Mr. Babcock to have his time to speak to us. So in consultation with our legal counsel, Mr. Hungerford, it was clear that this was appropriate use of our time. So, so we, we are definitely in a gray area and I would not, I just want to have on the record that would not hope that future boards use this as an example of a particularly unusual situation that rose to a level of worth consideration. Not like paving new ground or saying new president. So, anybody else says anything, nothing else to add? Then I would move that the board adopt the step two decision regarding the complaints submitted by Mr. Babcock.
Second?
It has been moved by me and seconded by Director Martinez of the Board, adopt the step two decision regarding the complaints submitted by Mr. Babcock. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you please call the roll?
Lisa Allen?
I am.
And Kim? Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Gideon Martinez?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries. This particular issue is resolved and so I can adjourn the hearing and then it comes, right? So the, the, this portion of the meeting is, the hearing is adjourned. And we will convene the budget meeting as we make the transition out. And I would say that I think all of us, Mr. Babcock, appreciate bringing this to our attention that I think we're all going to be looking forward to hearing how your one of our D A R worked out in the long run. Oh, we'll give you written notice of the board's decision. But we'll, we'll do that. So, yeah, I appreciate bringing this to our attention and this matter is concluded. We will convene the budget hearing. Do we have any members of the budget committee here?
They're online.
They're all online?
We're going to get up and go get our food and around the corner.
Can we adjourn that? Okay, all right. So for folks online, we will recess for a.
They muted the boardroom, so I don't know what you said, Mark. We're recessing for how long? I assume while you guys walk downstairs?
Sorry, no, we are staying in here for the, for the budget meeting. We are recessing for five minutes for people to grab the, that's provided food that's here today.
Okay.
Convert the budget meeting, committee meeting to attendees or visitors or whatever.
Okay. Five minutes, sounds good.
We're good. Now say. Go back one slide, please.
You want to go back one?
Thank you. Yep, we're good. The welcome slide, yep.
I can't get Dawn over. I don't know if you can.
All right. Looks like we have everybody, so I'm going to call our budget meeting to order. I think I do the script, yeah. Michelle doesn't interrupt or somebody in the script, right?
Right, welcome budget committee members. On page 107 of your regular board package, there is a special agenda for the budget committee meeting. And it starts with a call to order and welcome to the chair Watson. And then you can follow along to review and approve the agenda and then I'll get started.
All right. I move to approve the agenda for the budget meeting as printed.
Second.
Is the move by me and seconded by Nancy that we approve the agenda for the budget committee as printed. Is there any discussion? See no objections or any, if there's no objection, we will assume that is. Per board policy, D B E A, the budget committee, the budget committee will elect a presiding officer from among its members. Nominations are now in order for the position of budget committee chair. In the, in the past, I think it's often the board chair, so unless anybody really wants to do it.
I nominate board chair, Mark Watson.
Mark Watson has been nominated. Oh, no second required for nomination. How about that? Are there any other further nominations? Nominations are closed. From you guys' part, all in favor of electing Mark Watson position of budget committee chair, raise your hand.
You have to ask yourself if you're willing to do it.
We have to do a roll or just see no objection? If there's no objection, then the motion carries. Any objection? All right. All right. And away we go.
That would have been awkward, huh?
Yeah.
All right, if we can advance to the next slide, please. I'm just going to give a quick review of our budget committee responsibilities here tonight. First, we were to elect the chair. Congratulations to Chair Watson. Mike Scott, Superintendent Scott is going to deliver a budget message. This is, it's the annual presentation of kind of our budget overview and also highlights differences between our current year budget and our next year budget. We're going to review the proposed budget document that's been available online and in your packet. We have hard copies here as well, if someone would prefer a hard copy. There will be some discussion. There's a space in the agenda to allow for public comment. I, I don't think that we've seen any online, just my understanding. Doesn't mean we won't here tonight, I think. But then, at the close of the conversation, we will approve or move it towards adoption, propose budget towards adoption with or without changes after discussion with the board and then implementation starting next year. For some reason, we don't conclude tonight. We have an opportunity to schedule additional meetings as needed. But I'm hoping that we will, we will be able to answer questions. All right, our next step is to have Superintendent Scott deliver the budget message.
It's required that I read yourself out. So it's kind of lengthy, so.
Unless your font is a lot larger.
And thank you, Rose. This is, how great is that? It would be a page and a half, but it's six pages for me. Appreciate it. Dear Hillsborough School District Budget Committee members and patrons, in accordance with the O R S 294.391, I submit to you the Hillsborough School District, one J, proposed 2022-23 budget. The 2022-23 school year is the second of the 2123 biennium and therefore a funding that was already established. The 2021 legislative session set the school, the state school fund 9.3 billion, which is 300 million short of what would have been needed to meet the Hillsborough School District's actual service line. With our district receiving approximately 3.4% of every dollar appropriated by the state, the insufficient funding placed to a shortfall in H S T is just over $10 million or approximately $5 million per each year of life. Fortunately, there are other funding sources that have been made available to districts through legislative action and federal pandemic relief that will help us weather the coming year without having to make significant reductions to staffing levels or programs. In addition, the unique situation caused by COVID-19 in the 2021 school year led to a significant decrease in expenditures versus budget expectations, which I will describe below. The student investment account, which receives 50% of the revenue generated by the Student Success Act, is fully funded for the second year in a row. Two-thirds of S I A funding is used for services that would have been eliminated from the 2122 and 2223 budget cycles due to insufficient state level allocation. While one-third is used for investments based on stakeholder feedback and student needs that's identified with accelerated learning plan. The high school success plan, major 98, will also be fully funded for the second year in a row. The high school success plan initiative provides $800 per high school student for schools to establish or expand career and technical education programs, colleagues-level educational opportunities and dropout prevention strategy. The Hillsborough School District has used its major 91 money to hire graduation coaches and student support wellness counselors, as well as expand career-related learning courses and access to pro-secondary opportunities. Over the course of the COVID-19 pandemic, the federal government has made support and recovery funds available to individuals, nonprofits, businesses, municipalities and school districts. School districts. School district support has come through the elementary and secondary school emergency fund established as part of the Education Stabilization Fund and the CARES Act. There have been three rounds of investor funding made available to school districts as reimbursements for eligible expenses to be up to the allocation amount, which is based upon the formula used to determine the district's title of one of the distribution under the elementary and secondary education. H S T's allocation of this follows. Ezra 1, 1.3 million, that expires September of 2022. Ezra 2, 6.3 million, expiration date of September 2023. Ezra 3, A R P, American Rescue Plan dollars, 24.3 million, that expires in September 2024. Due to the modified service models of comprehensive distance learning and hybrid in the 2021 school year, the district did not access Ezra funds last year. Instead, we have carried the funds forward and allocated them on an annual basis as are the regular budget development cycle. That mapped backwards from their expiration date and targeted both operational and student needs. These funds are considered temporary in nature and the district is intentionally targeting them to provide temporary supplemental services for learning acceleration, safety and health and stability in operations over the full length of time available. The disruptions and uncertainty caused by the COVID-19 pandemic had a significant, significant impact on student staff and cabinets. Oregon schools had to spend approximately three quarters of the 2021 school year in a comprehensive distance learning model and the last quarter in a hybrid. Far from ideal for learning delivery, there were operational savings realized as a result. The district's participation in work share and reassignment of staff did not, it did not work. It did not have orders available during C D L. Coupled with savings on substitutes, temporary staff, utilities and supplies led to the avoidance of over $1 million in expenditures versus what was budgeted. We also received special relief funds from the state, 431,000, and Washington County, there's 1.5 million for a total of 1.86167 relief in additional revenue. Because school districts are required to have a balanced budget where total resources equal total expenditures, we are not allowed to carry over one-time resources beyond what is budgeted to achieve a zero-sum balance. Therefore, the district will be reestablishing the internal service fund into which 8.5 million of the surplus fund will be transferred and made available for future expenses. The district has established internal service funds before, most recently in 2013-14, that money was set aside in a cruise reserve fund to offset pension cost increases. The fund was using, the fund was utilized within five fiscal years and exhausted in 2018-19. This current iteration of internal service fund will not be designated as a specific purpose. Rather, it may be appropriated as transfers to the general fund by the board during future budget development period for such, for uses such as actual service level stabilization, technology replacement, cruise reserve strategic plan initiatives or curriculum adopters. The 2122 school year has been a bit of a transition year between what could already be considered as a typical educational experience in the C D L hybrid model of 2021. We anticipate that 2022 school year will represent a more complete return to normalcy and hope to see a stabilization of our enrollment student count. The Hillsborough School District, along with other districts across the state, has seen a decline in enrollment over the past two years due to the combined effects of pandemic uncertainty and decreased birth rates. We have based our 2022-23 budget on current enrollment projections and actual service level projections and will closely monitor enrollment trends to predict our budget needs for 2023-24 school year. As we enter the fall of 2022, advocacy efforts for the 2023 legislative session will increase to ensure that state governments maintain pace with actual service level cost projections. We invite you to stay informed and join us in those advocacy efforts as we work hard to ensure our students have access to all of the support, resources and opportunities that need to pursue their dreams.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Michelle.
As we go ahead and move to the next slide. This is a mini agenda within the agenda just for the proposed document review. We're probably going to move right along. Wanted to give you some kind of discussion about our, what we talked about so far this year and then present the proposed budget, but also give you some technical reading tips so that you understand kind of how the budget and accounting structure is designed and presented to you here. Talk a little bit about specifically about funding balance and the internal service fund that Mike mentioned. The accelerated learning plans, those Ezra funds coupled with student investment accounts, which we're going to have a close highlighted a little bit. And then our outlook and next steps. Please advance. All right, so this is, this is the technical tech support, if you will, just again about our accounting structure and how we group different types of revenues and expenditures. In January, we came together and we talked about the general fund that is indicated by 100 in the highlighted section of the account code there. You'll see that in the financial tables within the proposed document. In case you're wondering why, I'm sure that would be right now. General fund is used for operations. It's typically unrestricted as long as we're, you know, compliant with the Oregon Division 22, which is pretty much just room for school. The state school fund is a combination of income taxes and property taxes and it's redistributed to school districts across the state on a first unit basis. And that's the majority of our general fund resources. And just to note that the staffing cost on those expenditure side is about 78%. So that's just a good highlight on that. In February and March, we talked a little bit about the special revenue funds and those are indicated by a 200 or 2XX in the account code structure. Those are our normal state and federal funds that we receive. But also the Ezra funds that were mentioned in the budget message, the student investment account, high school success, nutrition services, all of those things that we shared earlier this year during our budget committee sessions are included in there. And then just earlier this month, we shared about our other major parks, which include debt service, capital projects and then our internal service. So there's two different, please advance. So there's two different ways that we look at our expenditures. That part of the equation, there's only one way you really look at the revenues. But for expenditures, we break them down the same pie, we break it down by function, which is numbers. The 1000s are typically instructional services, so classroom teachers, specialized teachers, anything that we can anchor back directly to instruction, we put it in the 1000s. Our 2000s are all the support services, so everything from facilities, transportation, admin support, all of those will come into the 2000s. Community services, we tend to spend a lot less in that area unless we have a targeted grant and we see that in. Community services, we tend to spend a lot less in that area unless we have a targeted grant, and we see that in the 3,000s. Our 4,000 expenditure grouping is more in the capital projects fund than anywhere else. Everything that we have in there is capitalized in some way, and our accounting code structure requires us to have that capitalized. And that's how we indicate it. The debt service and transfers will fall in the 5,000s. You'll see some activity there in the budget as well. And then our current year contingency, that's available under appropriation and then fund balance, which is something that is we just carry, we plan to reserve that and carry that forward into the future. Please advance. The other way we slice up the pie is by object, so this is where we get down into like more the stuff, the relatable stuff. So all of our salaries are within the 100s, and they're broken down into license, the administrative. You'll see that in our, again, in the tables of the document. Our associated payroll costs, including pension and insurance, are under the 200 grouping. Our 300s include utilities, but also all other services. Because we are a, we have a vendor that provides substitutes for us, that is a sizable chunk as well, because that's considered a service. We have all of our supplies in the 400s, and those are consumable, which are used within one year, and non-consumable, which are, can be used over a few-year period. The 500s, we have equipment, so that's anything over $5,000. And for the most part, that is either a special revenue expenditure or capital projects. Our transfers are 700s, and again, our contingency and fund balance are kind of come together in the 800s. We mostly do, yeah.
You said that 600s are special revenue or capital. I think you said that it was a special revenue year.
You would typically, no, I apologize, talking too fast. That was the 500s for equipment. We typically don't spend a lot of the equipment on equipment out of the general fund. That will come from a special revenue that's targeting towards something, or you'll see it in the capital projects fund where we typically, you know, spend over $5,000 on either an improvement or a piece of equipment. All right, so if we can advance. These are some notable changes from our current year. So we're staffing with the expectation that enrollment will return to pre-pandemic levels. So we're doing that because we're not in a reduction period, and we want to be fully staffed as those students come next to us. We are using temporary resources to meet the accelerated learning plans goals for students. Again, that's those SIR funds, and we have a slide in here dedicated to that. But because they're temporary, we're not anchoring them to anything that we want to sustain beyond a limited period of time. Even though we've kind of spread them out as far as we can into the future to support students and their needs, we understand that we're going to have to win off those things that are non-permeable. Items. We're going to continue to use the student investment account based on stakeholder feedback and current student needs. So again, that's as they come back to us, we're recognizing that our original plan for student investment is being modified as needed to meet what the needs of the students are. And then year two, we have a whole lot more information in this stuff, if you truly look through it. And if we have time and you have questions, Jeff can share more information about what we've included here, which we haven't ever done before, including projections into the next couple of years. And student information is in there in a way that we haven't presented before as part of our budget. All right, please advance. So fund balance and internal service fund. So in our 2021 annual financial report, we brought forward that we have a sizable beginning general fund balance. So we have $21.2 million, which is significantly higher than our targeted amount. A fund of balance overage is one-time money, and we've treated it like that. It was not appropriated for this year, so bringing it forward now to have it set into an internal service fund for future spending, which is how it was reported in our financial report as well. One of the things that we've been able to do is earmark within that our appropriation carryover for the schools. We allow them at the end of the year, if they haven't spent all of their funds, can carry over a certain amount of discretionary funds for the next year in case they're saving up for a sizable purchase, or if there was some type of interruption. So we were able to earmark that as part of our financial report, and you'll see it in here as well. The other key piece is that we, because we manage two insurance pools, one for each of our bargaining units, we're able to earmark those amounts within the budget, and before, that's always been nested within the end fund balance. So it's clearly identified here and will be hopefully from end of future periods as well. All right. Please advance. So the Internal Service Fund, this may look familiar because I presented just earlier this month kind of the concept and how, talked about how we used it in the past, and how it may be used for longer-term planning for the district, as it is one-time funds, and we don't want to prop up operations. It could be used for service stabilization in the event that we need to, there's some economic recovery that happens in the middle of a biennial period, and we need to make some adjustments. Technology replacement, we are currently a one-to-one device district for students at all levels, and that we were rushed there for, to respond to COVID and make sure that students have access to technology, their teachers, and their curriculum. And that is going to take some maintenance, care and feeding over time, and so being able to plan ahead for that as well. We have the curriculum adoption, you guys are well aware what Travis brings to you. Our Division 22 statement and where we're at with our curriculum, this way we provide an opportunity to align more with our state recommended adoptions. We could have used it before for PERS reserve as oftentimes we experience a spike every two years in PERS. For each 1% increase in PERS, that's roughly a million dollars impact to our budget, that just, it just happens. Somebody gets paid that, it's just an increased cost that we experience. And then the strategic plan initiatives, we're going through a really thorough process right now, and we'll finish it up, I think, next fall for our new strategic plan. And there may be components of that that can be piloted or supported by the use of this internal service fund resource. So it will be up for annual review by the Budget Committee for appropriations. Please advance. So this slide may look familiar to you, we talked about it, showed it in March, when we were looking at the special revenue funds specifically at SIR. And SIR 3, wanted to just bring it forward so that we can see again clearly and have it on the record what it is that we're carrying forward from the current year and the changes that we're making moving into 2223. And get that out there for review. Thank you, accelerated learning plan with the student investment account component. It's okay, please advance. Again, this is a slide that should be familiar, we reviewed it earlier. It talks about the components of the plan and which kind of big buckets we put them in as required by the grant application and also our reporting. Our quarterly, in our annual reporting, we have to report back to ODE and bring information back to the board as well in terms of our spending and the impact of that.
So can you remind us what SIA?
Student, student investment account. And that is funded by the corporate activity we passed, established in 2017. Just a little bit. It is a restricted program. So our outlook and assumptions for 2223. Our collective bargaining agreements are within our total budget projections for 2223, so that is an assumption that there's no material legal settlements during the fiscal year that we can't plan for at this time. We're maintaining that 4% fund balance. We're separate to that throughout and intend to keep that target. There, I know there's been a lot of discussion about that. We're planning on in-school services for all students each day for a full year. We're expecting that any costs that appear to be exceeding our projections will be managed within the appropriation level. So if we see something exceeding in one area, we can adjust in another area as needed, again, in response to what students need. We are assuming the economy will continue to stabilize and grow. So if there is contrary economic information, we will be reporting back to you on that and probably making some type of adjustment plans as we move throughout the year. We also assume that our operations will normalize post-pandemic so that eventually a lot of those excessive costs and expensive protocols will be able to be relieved by some level. All right, next slide, please. Next, Jeff. Because kittens.
Thought we agreed to remove.
So now is the time for questions and discussion. Again, I brought Jeff Jones here tonight, our manager of business services. He is a critical component of bringing this document together to answer the questions, or at least take the other questions we can respond to here tonight. We're seeking approval from the Budget Committee. And then we move towards the hearing and adoption and implementation next year.
Michelle, I do have a question. It's specifically, it's on page 49 of your proposal, which I greatly appreciate. Specifically, my question is with regard to special education versus standard instruction. And I'm trying to understand, special education per student is substantially more than that of standard construction for obvious, not so obvious students. I was wondering if you could provide me, or your staff could provide some context with regard to how many students we have that are receiving special education and how that 1,906 student looks at a real per student rate, does that make sense?
Yes, so special, I can't speak too much into the program, but I can tell you that math-wise here in this context, if they're receiving that full instruction amount over, plus the 1906 and services. And many of our students, I see that quite a bit, and some are really just close to that regular instruction amount, so it varies greatly. This was, you know, the calculation here was just kind of a straight division of our, some of our functions moved together. You'll see in the general fund by function, they're not highlighted in any way, but the ones that are special education specific, we pull those out separately from the regular instruction and other services.
Okay, thank you, because if, I don't know, anyone else could be looking at that, and if you are an advocate for special education, you would then think that maybe in some way those children are not being served equitably. So we, just for future reference, it's nice to know that that's the standard instruction plus that special education.
Yeah, we can eat that.
Looks like Kim, you have a question online?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I understood the SIA funds, and I know that we're not using them 100% as investment. Can Mike or Michelle clarify how much we're using for budget shortfall versus how much is actually being used as investment?
Yeah, thank you, Kim, I'm actually glad to talk about that because it's been something we've been working through on our last two budget cycles. So in our first year of the student investment account, say, yeah, 1920, we only received about 30% of the funding that was originally allocated to districts. They decided to use that elsewhere in the state, so we received about a third, and we spent about a third, about the full amount on kind of bridging a gap we had in the general fund budget with costs that were eligible under the grant. And so we did that through the budget process, and then we did it again for 2122 to the tune of, I want to say, $3.9 million. So as it stands today, about two-thirds of our student investment account dollars are being used to provide services that would have had to be reused from our general fund budget because our state school fund appropriation wasn't high enough. So one-third of it, so just over $5 million, is being used for investments.
And I'm going to assume that will be part of legislative priorities going into the next session so that legislators who think they're making a major investment in education understand that their investment is not what they're advertising.
Yes, I would hope that.
We have the Chair of the Legislative Policy Committee here with us tonight.
Well, I
It's on my to-do list, Kim.
This leads me to my next question, Chair. It doesn't, I'm not comfortable with the idea, with, with the way that the funding happened legislatively in the state. So I came in and then I realized, oh, something happened along the way. Little research says that it was put to the voters, and the voters said, no, 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 you just take the money from the big districts, and it's just equitably distributed, and then they'll figure it out. It just feels like we haven't quite figured it out.
Yeah, so one of the biggest challenges is how they do the calculation.
Yes.
And one of the things we've been advocating for a long time is to have our budget officers from our district be part of the conversation to say this is what actually costs us to keep our current service level. So we're, this is what we're trying to advocate with a lot of legislators, and also make a plug for our Budget Committee. This is another opportunity to have more advocates at the table. We're going to have a lot of new state legislators coming in, and there's going to be a great opportunity to educate them about the struggle that we're having in funding pre-K through 12 education. So this is on us to educate them and say, this, this is not a great model, and we should really have the people that see the numbers of our districts be at the table to tell you what it costs us, so, yeah.
The State's Legislative Policy Committee met over the weekend, adopted our new preamble or whatever, and so, so yeah, we spent quite a bit of time discussing this this past weekend, and I love that Michelle put actual service level right there in the thing. Using that term maybe two years now, as opposed to current service level, I love that. So yeah, the, so yes, members of the Budget Committee, this will be a very important fall for us and spring, as we prep for the upcoming legislative session, the number we've heard is 26 new legislators. So while we often, and sometimes I feel like we're banging the same drum, talking about some of these things, but we're going to have a large number of legislators who have never heard the story before. So while the story may seem familiar to us, it will be brand-new to some people, and when we say things like, we know that the student investment account is being used to backfill holes in the general fund, 20, at least 26 of the new people did not vote the student investment account, may not even understand how it works with the original templates. So some of the legislative work, I feel we have to do is bring them up to speed to where we are on a lot of this, help them understand, and, and I believe, we feel like we're making progress in having business officials' representation at the table for figuring out what current service level is. So hopefully, we'll make progress.
I also just wanted to add, Michelle, that I love every time this document always looks better and better to me. Like, it's just easier to read, Jack, it's a great job, especially having pictures of the kids here, like, looking at the, just the narration of the document is really good. And I also really appreciate the, the technical tips on how to read this. That is super helpful, I think, for a lot of people that show up from that same background to understand what is the translation of those numbers to actual words, what does that mean? So I just commend our, our finance office for breakout.
Do you stand on the kittens, on the where do you stand on the
I'm good with the kittens.
Well, actually, I thought it was an indication that you were hurting cats. Totally good with that.
Other questions? So I know we've discussed that the ending fund balance had decreased over time, like the results of actions of previous boards and maybe edging it back to four point five or five percent with such a large ending fund balance. If not now, then why would we do that?
Well, because of the way that we have to report the internal service fund in our comprehensive annual financial report, it will be as a kind of a note to the fund balance. So to, to folks that don't know us, that's going to look like money in the bank tomorrow, which will help us, like, at whatever level it is. So our comprehensive annual financial report is going to include that as part of the fund balance. For our planning purposes, for our budget and appropriation purposes, we are, we are planning it for future.
Yeah, I'm less interested in the appearance because then we're not going to get to whatever that means. We're not going to move the needle enough for that. But those two point five percent drops saved how many teachers' jobs? So not having that available for future boards. So I feel like it's part of our responsibility and I feel like we are sympathetic to service ourselves immediately. But, you know, when we're not actively cutting the budget like we did for the past twelve years here, for twelve consecutive years, whatever, I feel like it's part of our responsibility to give future boards that ability to save some people's jobs by cutting up fund balance back to four percent when they happen. So I'm very interested in maybe two jumps, point five, you know, four point five and then five percent getting back to that. It wasn't that long ago that we were at five percent. Was it the second jump, right? We were on board for the second jump? I don't think you were on board for the first, yeah. But so as well as recently, we were at five percent and recently is twenty sixteen, maybe? So it feels like a long time ago, but it wasn't that long. So, man, I feel like finding a way to get back to that, if only so that future boards have the ability to cut it again when the state, when we hit that big recession, that's not COVID-related. I feel like they're going to need that.
I think they're going to need it, but the truth is, we don't have any. I think what you're trying to say is that we want to give them the option. They may not feel like they
No, I want to increase the ending fund balance to five percent and four percent. That's my
I assume you're talking in future years?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, it feels like the ship has, we talked about it, I guess. I guess moving out is forcefully, but this year, as maybe I, I would have been an advocate for it for this year, but I didn't realize, like, I don't think I made it as clear as maybe I could, but I don't think the board made it a mandate. But so, yes, I guess in future years, I would, you know, I would love to see us find a way to get back to that ending fund balance of five percent as opposed to four percent.
Okay, understood. And what we did
I'm not saying we don't vote on it tonight.
No, no, thank you. Instead, what we did is we got to four percent in addition to the internal service one. And so we do have, we have some money set aside. It's more targeted, for sure.
Yes.
So, but understood.
So, so let's, let's take this a little bit further. How do, how does, how does that, if we got back to five percent, then does that not put us back in a situation with legislature that says, oh, they got plenty of money and then they take more away from us? That's what I want to confirm that that can't happen. Do you see it on my concern?
Yeah.
Okay, because the money in the bank thing, I just, it scares me if we have people who can say, oh, you collected too much, so we'll just give it away because you don't need it, obviously. And the truth is, we desperately need that money, right?
If you were to look across the region, we have a lower ending fund balance than most in terms of percentage. And so that, what you're describing doesn't happen. We are, we are allowed to grow that without that.
And the reason we're much lower than, lower than other districts is because previous boards chose to cut the ending fund balance to save a few teachers' jobs back over the course of five, five or six years towards the end. Understood. So, so we made the choice, okay, Michelle's, her department are already dancing and have a pen. Increase the circumference of the pen, hopefully there's steps to be done for sites to save a few jobs. So I'd like to increase the circumference of the pen a tiny bit. We're not going to be able to increase to twenty-five. And what I think, like, point five percent is one point three million, something like that, one point two, maybe? Right, so we're having to talk about a giant number that incrementally over the course of a couple of years.
So when you, so when you guys said that we're a lot less than other districts, the other districts outside, are you just talking about among the eight, ten?
All of the above. Yeah, just in general, regardless of size of the district, we are quite a little lower than most. There's some other large districts that are in the same areas, same vicinity, but we're on the lower end. And what it, what it means then is that if there were to be a big hit to the budget, we would have to right-size quickly during the next stacking season. So we would have to look at class size adjustments and that kind of thing because we're, we're not at the point where we have a large ending fund balance that we can control the problem on a temporary basis, which is what Mark is trying to guard against.
And I don't want to speak for previous boards, but, you know, it was a tough decision they made. Although we have a previous board member with their hand up.
We were on the board when we did that.
Yeah. Yeah, the second one, right? Kim, you have a question or a comment?
I have a comment. I'll just remind you that two-thirds of your SIA dollars are filling a hole. So when you think about wanting to increase your ending, your, that balance, don't forget that you want to be advocating in Salem to change the funding system and we all just received a kicker. So at the same time that Oregon citizens are getting money back, we're backfilling. And I think the only way you can grow that ending fund balance is to fix those levers.
Christine, you have a comment?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. I too, next year, not saying for this particular budget, but next year, I'd like to see that growth for the ending fund balance as, as an option, whether that's, you know, a half percent or a full percent or something like that, just for the future budget committee for that, that particular year going forward. Also, and just out of, I think I have asked this before, but I don't have, don't have my sticky note on what the answer was. I know we've talked about strategic planning and that that is a big effort that's coming up. Are we anticipating that that is going to be a full-year project that we're going to be doing or what, what's kind of the timeframe for that? Because I was, I was thinking about the internal service fund and, and as well as the strategic planning effort and trying to fund some of those initiatives, so I wasn't sure about the timeframe.
And so you have finger for six or seven months, right?
I thought Michelle wanted to answer. Yeah. This is Michelle. It's about seven months before we have the plan itself.
Okay.
So it would be coming into the next budget cycle, probably when we would be looking at implementing any strategies that come forward out of that plan.
Yeah, and just to clarify, it'll be a seven-month process approximately with the starting point of summer. So between August and February is when the bulk of the work will take place and then we'll present the plan to the board for the first time in March so that it can be adopted in time for the budget process next year.
Okay, yeah, that, that's the thing I was kind of curious about is, you know, was, was the timeframe for the strategic planning effort, was it going to align with the budget process? So potentially some sort of a budget package, if, if needed, desired, et cetera, could make it into the process? So it sounds like that that is going to happen, so, okay, thank you.
Christine, just to follow up on your question, are you thinking that maybe we need to be a little bit more aggressive about preparing for what could come from that strategic plan?
Oh, that's a good question. You know, I, I hate to, I hate to be super aggressive with strategic planning just because I, I've always felt like in any process I've gone through, it's such, it's such an evolving process. I mean, it, it really, it takes time and it's not something, in my opinion, that it's valuable, but you don't want to rush it. Because I have found when you rush strategic planning, that, that often it kind of ends up kicking you in the butt in the end. So I hate to say it that way, but I just was kind of curious if we were going to be able to do that. And, and even if, even if it doesn't align totally up with the budget process, the fact that that is something that could inform the budget process, regardless of whether there's a package or not, I think is just good to keep in mind.
Thank you.
We did not have any public inputs submitted before online, we don't have any cards today, right? So not to read the public input statement. Is there any further discussion of the budget documents or Michelle's team?
Hey, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I moved that the Hillsborough School District One J budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three in the aggregate amount of four hundred fifty-three million, two hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars total of all funds. Be approved as proposed and at the permanent tax rate of four point nine seven four nine dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed value be assessed in support of the general fund. I further move that tax levies totaling thirty-nine million, eight hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars be approved for the debt service fund for the purposes of the retirement of bonded debt owed by the district. All right. It's been moved by me and seconded by Erica. Three dollars again, I really do don't want. Yeah, all right. That the board of directors, that the budget committee approved the Hillsborough School District One J budget for twenty-two, twenty-three in the aggregate amount of four hundred fifty-three million, two hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars of total funds be approved as proposed and at the permanent tax rate of four point nine seven four nine dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed value be assessed in support of the general fund. I further move that tax levies totaling thirty-nine million, eight hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars be approved for the debt service fund for the purpose of retirement of bonded debt owed to the district. Rose, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Don Wallace.
Aye.
Michael Smith.
Aye.
Christine Adams Wamber.
Aye.
Kim Scott.
Aye.
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Kim Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Vidia Martinez.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. The budget is approved. Thank you very much, Michelle, for all the hard work you did to me. All right, that is the last item in our work session. So I will recess our meeting up here and we will proceed into regular session at seven minutes and up everybody? Seven, ten? Seven, ten, all right, see everyone upstairs. Seven, ten? Seven, ten. All right, see everyone upstairs. Lisa, can you hear us? All right. Have we begun recording? It's still recording. Oh, all right. We are still recording. All right. I will call this regular session of the Hillsborough School Board to order. We'll begin as we always do with the flag salute. If you are here in the room, it's back there towards the door. Thank you, everyone. As we gather here today, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service areas on the occupied traditional homelands of the Atfala de Indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County in the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on, the Tuolton, Kalapuya, the Kthlamit, Clackamas, Tomwater, Molalla, Bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. And remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native first peoples communities living in the metro area, which includes over four hundred tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. All right. First order of business, as often is the case, we have some recognitions and proclamations. I believe you are up first, Adam, correct? Who brings the mic up or get closer, one of the two? I don't think it's on. There we go.
There. Thank you. Okay, Chair Watson and school board members, thank you for this opportunity tonight to recognize Jim Peterson, who has been an instrumental part of our district for over twenty years and crucial to the twenty-two thousand six and two thousand seventeen bond programs. Jim started his work career in nineteen seventy-four with four years in the US Army. From there, he spent many years working as a maintenance and production supervisor. Jim came to the Hillsborough School District in two thousand as an electrician and an HVAC specialist and became coordinator of facilities in two thousand six. The experience he gained gave Jim an intimate knowledge of all of the mechanical, electrical, HVAC roofing and every other kind of system uh, in every building in our district. His skills and leadership provided crucial assistance in the implementation of the two thousand six bond projects. When we started to prepare the this the team for the two thousand seventeen bond, I immediately approached Jim to see if he'd be willing to take on this new challenge. Thankfully, Jim agreed. His knowledge and experience have been critical in helping guide the district through all phases of the bond work. Jim has been involved in everything from the design of new buildings, selection of mechanical and electrical equipment, methods of construction, city and county meetings, and so much more. His goal has always been to provide the best learning environments we can for our students and staff and to provide the best value for the community. I know that everybody involved in the bond would agree that Jim has been a key player in making sure we deliver on the promises we made to our community when they voted for the passage of the two thousand seventeen bond. When we started this work, our core district bond team members, myself, Jane, Sharon, and Jim had all planned to see the bond program through to completion and then retire. However, due to some ongoing medical issues, Jim was forced to retire in January of this year. While Jim's health has kept him from staying involved in all of his bond work, he's agreed to work on specific projects, thankfully, uh, including the Liberty Solar Array project and the facilities assessment that we're completing. So tonight, I'm very happy to have this opportunity to publicly thank Jim for his twenty-two years of service to the Hillsborough School District and especially for the last five years supporting the two thousand seventeen bond program. Our district and our facilities are better for Jim's dedicated service and our students and community will continue to benefit from Jim's work for many years to come. Come on up, Jim.
Wow. Well, Adam, thank you for some some very kind words and thank you, everybody. Um, I'm I'm not a whole lot for standing in front of people and talking off. Kind of goes with the the maintenance aspect of things, which is probably why I was there for a long time. But anyway, I just want to thank um, all all my fellow administrators and all board members and everyone in the district really for a wonderful, wonderful, it was twenty-one and a half years. And um, you know, coming from my background and then coming into the the public sector like I did in the K-12 environment, I have to say that that this environment and working with all these great people and all the challenges that that's faced in the K-12 environment has provided me a level of personal growth that, you know, I would not have been able to achieve it in in other positions. So thank you, everyone, for all of that. And I guess that's about all I've got. So thank you.
But before we're done, I think, Matt, you had something you wanted to add too. Is this appropriate time for that? Okay. Yeah, it'd be it'd be better. People online will be able to hear you better if you do.
Well, my name is Matt Costigan. I'm a board citizen bond oversight committee member and representing the oversight committee tonight. I just wanted to say, Jim, we really appreciate all the work that you did in the five years that we've been with this bond. Uh, we've seen tremendous growth in what we're giving the kids and then what Jim has done. So I just wanted to say thanks from the bank.
And I think Mike has something to add as well.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take this opportunity to just share some thoughts about Jim. And um, we meet on Thursdays regarding bond stuff and there are many Thursdays where someone will be discussing a new problem that's come up and someone will say, we better check with Jim on that. And uh, what Jim will do is he will say, yeah, we dealt with that back in two thousand eight. If you look in the ceiling of room eighteen, you're gonna find a shut-off out. I mean, it's just this super specific information that really indicates that he has a knowledge of the district that is just so impressive and has been so important as we've gone through this bond process as well as before all the bond work. And in addition to the expertise that he brings, I think what I appreciate most about Jim is his all of his personal traits. I think I even appreciate that more. He's got such a calm demeanor. He's such a professional. He's he's got expertise and he he does his homework and he does that in a way that he he shows his integrity on a regular basis. So Jim, thank you very much for all your years in the district and all of the information that you've shared with us and the the troubleshooting that you have engaged in. We just appreciate everything that you've done on behalf of our students. So thank you.
Thanks, Jim. While you're up, Director Martinez is because our next one, right?
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be able to present the following proclamation. The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. The Hillsborough School District knows that students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school and appreciates the role that school nurses play in the lives of our students. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than a hundred years. The school district understands that school nurses are the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. The Hillsborough School District celebrates the accomplishments of school nurses and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools. The Hillsborough School District offer gratitude for school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of May sixth through the twelfth, two thousand twenty-two to be School Nurses Appreciation Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of school nurses to the development of prosperity of our community.
Our next proclamation is Director Kim.
Thank you, Chair Watson. It's my honor to read the proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have lived and worked in Oregon since its early days, contributing to the state's rich history, economy, and culture. The Hillsborough Stool School District knows that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have helped advance our community's prosperity through their contributions to all fields of education, business, the arts, economic development, science, and technology. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders' history is marked by a struggle for freedom, equality, and justice prevailing over the adversity of exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities. The Hillsborough School District understands that the vibrant history and diverse cultures of Oregon's Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are here to be honored as a central part of our state's story and shared across all Oregon communities. The Hillsborough School District celebrates that the month of May is nationally recognized as a time to celebrate contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to our society and collective history. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand twenty-two to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of Asian Pacific Americans to the development of prosperity of our community. Thank you.
Director Allen, I believe you have our final proclamation for the evening?
I do. Thank you. I'm very excited to make the proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week. The Hillsborough School District celebrates teachers who keep American democracy alive by molding future community members through guidance and education. The Hillsborough School District honors teachers who are constantly learning so they can adapt to the ever-changing needs of a diverse population in order to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams that reach beyond the limits of their present circumstances. The Hillsborough School District thanks teachers who contribute to the growth of our city, state, and nation by providing high-quality equitable education to all students. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. The Hillsborough School District salutes teachers and their work to inspire students to discover endless possibilities for success. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of May second to the sixth, two thousand twenty-two to be Teacher Appreciation Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of teachers to the development of prosperity of our community. Thank you.
At this point, I would like to entertain the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
No, you have to somebody else does move it. I didn't move it.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Martinez and seconded by, oh, the other way around. You second. Sorry, removed by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Martinez that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed. Without objection, the motion will carry. Audience time. We do not have anyone signed up. Is that correct? No cards in the room and nobody filed before. All right. I don't, one thing I love, one thing less I have to read. Cool. Before we move on with the consent agendas, my understanding that somebody would like to, one of the board members like to amend the consent agenda?
Yes. So I'd like to move that we amend the consent agenda to remove policy JB.
Second. It has been moved by Director Ward and seconded by me that the Board of Directors amend the consent agenda to remove policy JB from the consent agenda and add it to the end of the agenda to be discussed individually. Any other discussion? Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Monica Ward. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I move to approve the consent the consent agenda as amended.
Aye, second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any further discussion? As amended, sorry, as amended. Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda as amended has passed. First item for the body of the work is the reports and discussions. And I would guess City of Hillsborough was being represented by Mayor Callaway if I had to guess, right?
Oh, no, there's other people here.
There's a couple of people. All right. So we have a presentation from the City of Hillsborough regarding the upcoming levy. Oh, and a PowerPoint.
Well, thank you. It is good to be here. It's great to see so many friendly and familiar faces. Young, familiar, friendly faces. And so, thank you very, very much for allowing us the privilege of coming and presenting tonight. With me is Pesseth Peach, who is the Public Information Officer for Hillsborough Fire and Rescue. And so we will be presenting this PowerPoint together and sharing information. And I will be more of the advocacy person. Pesseth is strictly information. And so, but we will also entertain any questions that you might have.
Chair, Chair Watson, Board members, educators, staff, and guests, thank you. As as Mayor Callaway said, my name is Pesseth Peach, Public Information Officer of Hillsborough Fire and Rescue. As the mayor said, we'll go through a very brief informational presentation and then entertain any questions you might have with the time remaining. So if we can start with the first slide. We're here tonight to share with you the proposed measure 34-311, which is a renewal of our five-year operating levy for police, fire, and parks. This proposed measure will be on the upcoming May 17 ballot slide. Next slide, actually. So the the current ballot, excuse me, the current local option levy was first authorized by voters in 1998. It was last renewed by in 2017 by the voters and it is set to currently expire in June of 2023. The rates for the local option levy that's being proposed for renewal is $1.72 per thousand of assessed value, which is different than market value, and the levy itself is set for another five-year term. Slide please. So just based on the assessed value evaluation at $1.72 per thousand of assessed value, the average cost for a homeowner in the City of Hillsborough is about $516 each year for each of the five years of the levy. Slide. If passed, the majority would go to service, police, fire, and emergency medical services. And the remaining amount would then go to our parks for maintenance and upkeep of our, as many of you probably have seen or participated in some of our beautiful parks within the city. Next. So for police, it would maintain not only our sworn officers on duty, but other programs that our police services provide, which includes domestic violence services, community engagement code enforcement, our school resource officers, youth outreach, and homeless assist engagement, and our mental health response teams. Slide. For fire and rescue, it would help us maintain our emergency response times to to medical, emergency medical and fire calls. We also run from fire and rescue other programs in terms of community disaster emergency management and fire and safety education, which includes outreach and service to our youth and students. Next. And therefore, of course, for our parks, as I mentioned, it would help us to maintain upkeep and maintenance of all of our sports fields, playground equipment, and of course, those shelters and restaurants that are all part of our parks program. Slide. If the measure does not pass, as I mentioned before, the the current local option levy that was passed in 2017 would expire in June of 2023. And public safety in parks would maintain, or excuse me, remain a priority. Although as part of the the standard budgeting process, the the city would then have to look at how that that loss of revenue would then have to be reallocated or considered as part of the impact for the levy not passing. Slide. So more information is available on our website, hillsboro-oregon.gov. If you type in forward slash local option, you'll see all the information that I've just presented to you. As I understand it, the elections office, if you haven't already registered as a voter, I think that was midnight of last night, tonight, midnight of tonight. But you can, you can go to the county's website or call the number and find out more about about your ballots and voting.
So if you're going to register to vote tonight before midnight, you'll do that on the Secretary of State's website. And so, you know, this levy has been endorsed by the News Times. It has been supported unanimously by all of our school board members, by our Parks Commission, and a tremendous number of people, you know, from throughout our community. It's, I I recognize that Hillsborough School District, the boundaries, you know, go beyond our city limits. So this will only be voted on by the residents of Hillsborough School District who live in the city limits of Hillsborough. However, the students outside of the city limits also benefit. As Pesseth mentioned, we have our school resource officers who are supported through that program as well as many of the parks, parks things that occur. It's important to note that we are very well aware that it there that we're all being hit right now by inflation, rising costs. And so this is the same rate that it has been since 2006. So we are very proud of that fact and also very proud of the fact that we're good stewards of the public resources and the public trust. And when you think back to 2006, which is the last time it was increased, you know, we were tens of thousands of fewer people in our city. And so we have increased, you know, our police, our coverage, we have increased our fire coverage as well as added parks through, you know, in the in the almost 20 years since then. So again, it is a great bargain for the money. And, you know, and and I will just remind folks, you know, of the January 2nd fire that we had downtown and the tremendous response that we received from our fire and rescue department as well as other surrounding departments. But our police were also a part of the response to that with traffic control. Our Parks Department was part of the response to that because it was January. We're making sure that, of course, all of our sidewalks were were cleared, be iced, and and that sort of thing. So, you know, there is hardly an event that happens in Hillsborough where all three of these departments are not involved and working with each other and supporting each other. So with that, I will close and we are willing and welcome, willing to entertain any questions. And we welcome your feedback as well.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do, believe it or not. Mayor Callaway, this is an incredible feat to both you and our Public Information Officer. I'm just curious as to why you didn't try to go for more. The fact that I I think it's a point of pride and I agree with you and you are to be commended that we've been able to do this, what we do with this exponentially growing population over 20 years. When, I just find it amazing that you're still going for the same amount for another five years.
Sure. And so it's, while it's a matter of pride, it's still a deal of practicality. We just didn't need to raise it yet. And so I would anticipate that, you know, when this passes, that we would five years from now. But I think, you know, some of the growth that we've had with business, with residents, you know, that does increase the tax base. And so that has been part of the, you know, so there are benefits, you know, to this growth as well. And so, you know, as as we work hard to make sure everybody pays their way, we've seen that that's occurring already. Thank you.
Very much.
Director Kim, you have a question?
Not a question, but but just a comment and a note of gratitude to the Hillsborough Police Department. I personally, last year, I know some of you here know this, but we, our family experienced a break-in. And we were out of town, thankfully, when that happened. But when we connected with the Hillsborough Police Department at like the wee hours of the night, I think it was around midnight, they responded in like five minutes, surrounded the house, and they actually was able to catch the intruder who had been living in our home for about 36 hours. But the amount of attention and care that my family had received from the police department and even the follow-up and the additional monitoring that that followed in the weeks to come was something that was so greatly appreciated and gave myself and my husband and my daughter just a huge sense of peace. And so I very much appreciate that the work of the city and wanted to publicly thank that police department. Thank you.
I just had a question, Mayor. Does this also, I had two actually. One, does this also touch on libraries as well besides parks or?
No. So the libraries are funded through the WCCLS Countywide Levy, and that passed a couple of years ago, and then through our general fund. So we take the the funds from both sources and that's how we fund the library. We no longer fund it through overdue book fines for kids, right? I wish that was around 25 years ago because they made a lot of money off the Callaway household. But now, Pesseth mentioned, you know, that if it if it fails, and I anticipated that if it does, we would come back again in November and or next spring. But, you know, because libraries are funded out of the general fund, and if we didn't have the local option, then libraries would be vulnerable as we try to make up the shortfall, you know, for our police, fire, and parks maintenance.
And my other question was just around, I think you talked a lot about like position salaries and programs, but does this also potentially include infrastructure or capital projects for expanding the service delivery or just programmatic and salary?
It is all program, program. There's no, there's no, I guess, what I would say tangible results from this other, I mean, in in terms of capital projects yet. Nothing physical. It is all for programs, people. There may be some equipment that could be purchased, you know, for parks maintenance, for instance. But, you know, we just bought, you know, a million-dollar fire truck, I think that was in, that went into operation right before the fire. And that was money that we had saved through the general fund over several years so that, you know, we we bought it and we're glad we did. So a lot of that, you know, hard, you know, that that, I guess, concrete things come out of our general fund as well. Thanks.
Yeah, I I think you're similar to other government agencies like us where if we want to buy stuff or buildings, you know, build a school, we have to pass a bond. And so I think, just to clarify, what we're really talking about is people, right? Like the Forest Grove has a levy, Beaverton has levy for their school districts. We do not have one. Something we should consider. But but, you know, in my understanding, it's been, if you want to buy big things, you have to pass a bond. And the levy money is really for people. So is what we're talking about, are the people that make up the core of the departments? Yeah. I too would also like to extend my thanks to your departments or my story doesn't end quite as well as Director Kim's story, but, you know, you guys did help my house. Some stuff survived and I appreciate the the quick response you guys had assisting TVFNR and putting out the house fire I had in Aloa. And while I can't vote on this, I support it and I I there's, I'm working on becoming a resident of Hillsborough. We'll see how that goes. Thank you very much for your time. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Michelle with our financial presentation. Let me get her a microphone. So everybody online can hear. Oh, man.
Is that better? Can you hear me?
Yep.
So thank you. As reported in the board packet, we have our monthly financial report describing the activities of the business office, student incidents, and workers' comp. Information is also in there for the district. Included in there is also our monthly cash flow report. So and I apologize, it's rather small in print, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about where we are in terms of tracking our cash flows for the year. This is just the general fund represented here.
Director Kim, do you have a question? Okay, no worries. Does any, does anybody have a question for Michelle or department? Thank you as always for preparing a great report. No, no shout out for anyone in the department this particular session. Normally we do.
Well, a sad goodbye. We had a long-term staff member, Lynette Kaufman, our benefit supervisor, has left us for a neighboring district and we're in the process of transitioning in new personnel to that role. But definitely appreciate all her years of service and we wish her the best.
All right. Thank you.
As we transition out, I want to make, give shout-outs to yourself, Michelle, for an incredible presentation to us today. That was a lot of work. And we appreciate the details and the way you laid out to us. And again, I think I said to you this before that when we attended the National School Board Association Convention, it was very interesting how I could have the conversation with individuals who did not receive this type of information, who did not have that kind of support from their financial officers. And so it is not to be overlooked and is deeply appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Thomas. I'll take that back to my team.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right. The first of our action items is Kama.
Good evening. I'm very pleased to to share that we're here to ratify the agreement with the Hillsborough Classify United. We have been bargaining since January 2021. And we opened all of the articles and we were able to reach tentative agreement on April 8th and they ratified the contract on April 15th. Some of the highlights from the salary and financial components that are listed here is that we will be increasing the current 21-22 salary schedule by 4%. Employees who have not been eligible for step advancement will be able to move forward with that because we are adjusting the salary schedule to drop the first step and extend the step so that we can add to that. And then we have also worked for our employees who have 15 or more years of experience will receive a longevity bonus payment of $500 payable at the end of the 22-23 and 23-24 contract years. Some of the language that's included in here was thinking of the time period of which we were finishing our our bargaining contract negotiations and what we could be forward-looking. One of the things that we did in collaboration with the HCU was we had a wage analysis salary study that we completed and we were able to kind of target particular positions and we will make those implementations in 22-23 and 23-24. And then one of the things that we also made an overall increase for the 23-24 was 3%. And then we had a rich discussion about at the addition of the Juneteenth holiday. And we have considered that as a paid holiday for our 12-month employee starting in this coming June. And so, and moving forward. And then something that we found is a real value of conversation and rich dialogue was denoting a stipend for those that are bilingual languages designated by the district and they would be receiving $1,200 in regards to that and we will have an assessment in place. And some of the insurance increases are $50 for the next three years of the contract. And then I don't want to go into full detail of all the things listed on page two. But you can see there was a rich conversation that we had in our collaborative discussions with Hillsborough Classified United in regards to just temporary positions, things in regards to vacancies. We want, also wanted to afford our staff opportunities for professional development. So we increased those funds and increased the opportunity for employees to apply for those funds at different rates throughout the year. And we're just, we're really pleased at being able to finish this bargaining and just want to thank all of the folks that were involved in that. It was not a me, it was a we process. And I just really appreciate our work with the folks that lead in the Hillsborough Classified United and then our team that we came together. So I would like to go ahead and turn it to you to to vote.
And traditionally, a board member will sit on a bargaining committee. And while I did not begin on the committee, I filled the vacancy at one point. So I want to thank HCU for having me as their board member and sharing their stories and moving my heart on more than one occasion during the conversation. So, you know, it'll be two and a half years. So we've been, we've been at this a minute. So the three years, the 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 three-year agreement we just came to covers the current year we're in. So it'll be for the next two years, which means that many of you will be serving on the board during the next go-around. And, you know, I encourage you to participate if you have the time because it is a very rewarding experience to be in the room with all those folks. And they're probably done with me. So does anybody have any questions for Kama?
I just want to recognize that the $50 stipend for the bilingual that that we have is going to be a difference, especially
Yeah. Me too. Yeah, that's something I was super proud that we were able to get in there, yeah, and keep through all the discussions. Okay, would anybody like to make a motion?
Chair Watson, I am thrilled to move that the Board of Directors approve the three-year collective bargaining agreement with Hillsborough Classified United effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, as tentatively agreed to by the district bargaining team.
Second.
All right. It has been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Kim that the Board of Directors approve the three-year collective bargaining agreement with the Hillsborough Classified United effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, as tentatively agreed by the district bargaining team. Are there any further discussions?
I'll just also say thank you for volunteering to represent the board and the bargaining, and also thank you for our classified union, and we're very excited to reach this on this moment.
Looks like we have another comment from the one of the students. Get right up in there.
All right.
Jordan reminded us before the meeting to get right up on the mic.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, well done.
Let's go. I also just want to show like gratitude, and I like, and I think it's a good thing that we have like Juneteenth, the paid holiday, and then like the bilingual stipend. I think it really shows like what our district values. And it shows that like we value these things, like we value bilingual staff, and we value their diversity at our school. So I just wanted to give a little shout out to that.
Any other comments? Rose, can you please call the roll?
Hi.
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 Hi. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have an agreement.
Yay.
Yay. It's okay to say yay.
Thank you.
Our next action item is approval of the purchase of some electric school buses. Michelle, that's that's yours?
Electric buses, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Chair Watson. In collaboration with Carol Hatfield, our executive director of transportation, I developed the situation page to describe the purchase that we need authorization for to move forward on the order for the buses. It's not anticipated that we'll have them for the next several months, but we are using that time to get the infrastructure in place as well. So seeking your approval of this purchase.
Are there any questions?
I think it's like, I think it's good that we're moving towards like having electric vehicles. I know, like, you know, as like a member of our schools, environmental club, like, we really appreciate electric vehicles, and it's good that we're going in that direction, so go, so yay. And also, I'm not sure if you can answer this question, but do we know where these buses would be like going in a sense?
Not sure exactly where they're going to be stationed. Casey Wallachich may have an answer, but I know that as far as the routes they're going to be doing, I think they're going to be staying within the in internal city of Hillsborough because of just type of, they can't do those longer runs as easily as our diesel buses at this time. But Casey, would you like to respond?
Yeah, initially, they'll be housed in our new transportation support services building in our new building up by Liberty High School. We have a lot of the infrastructure when we built that building to be ready for it. So that'll be the initial spot for it. We also have plans to put the electrical charging stations down at the original Walnut Street. And these buses will primarily be used in the district. They don't have a ton of, in the city, a ton of extended range that we drive in our surrounding areas. So primarily downtown Hillsborough.
Especially in the winter when you turn the heat on. Any other questions or comments?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of two vehicles for a total estimated cost of $792,328.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Martinez that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of two vehicles for a total estimated cost of $792,328. Is there any further discussion? I would just take this opportunity to note that much of the funds came from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. And I would just like to once again thank, at the time Representative, now Senator Solomon, Representative McLean, and Senator Riley for thinking of the school district as they were pooling their resources and figuring out the most effective way to have a multiplier effect on the money that they were allocated to use in the American Rescue Plan Act. And so much of this comes from the work of our legislative representative, so I thank them for that.
And also the work of Mark Watson, who did a lot of the groundwork to make this happen. So he, and you volunteered to be the first passenger on this bus.
Yeah, I'm very much looking forward to be passenger number one when we, when we get that going.
We're, we're actually going to fight about who's passenger number one.
All right, Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Hi.
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 Hi, motion carries.
But I'll let you be the first one to get some, please, if I can.
Know what the difference is? Get on the mic. All right. Our next action item is related to us calling out or recognizing donations over $5,000. Michelle, I think you have some details for us.
I do, thank you, Chair Watson. District Policy KH states that we will, that we may receive gifts of over $5,000, and they will come to the board for recognition. Just a note here that our schools do receive far more support than this. It's just in smaller increments and spread over time. So special thanking to everyone who supports their community school. We have received a donation of $7,462.40 from the Orenco Booster Club to Orenco for library materials and supplies, some recess equipment, and then some Spanish library books. And we received another donation of $6,394.55 from the North Plains Parent Teacher Organization to North Plains Elementary School for computer purchases. And we are looking for acceptance.
Does anybody have any questions? Interesting, yeah. Get up close.
Just, just real quick. So, Michelle, you were saying for acceptance because the district's already accepted this, right? We're just acknowledging this.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michelle is, I I think maybe we could further clarify that there's a reporting requirement. And so when they, when the booster clubs and the PTOs raise that amount of money over the 5,000, then they have to report it, and then that's what Michelle brings to us.
Not necessarily report it, if they donated, we just have chosen to call it out, yeah.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors accept the donation of $7,462.40 from the Orenco Booster Club to Orenco Elementary School for library materials and supplies, recess equipment, pardon me, and Spanish library books, and the donation of $6,394.55 from the North Plains PTO to North Plains Elementary School for computer purchases.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Allen that the Board of Directors, I'll say, acknowledged the donation of $7,462.40 from the Orenco Booster Club to Orenco Elementary School for library materials and supplies, recess equipment, and Spanish library books, and the donation of $6,394.55 from the North Plains PTO to North Plains Elementary School for computer purchases. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Hi.
You can.
Hi.
Erica Lopez.
Hi.
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 Hi, the motion carries. One more, sorry?
Thank you.
Uh, one more action item. We pulled out policy J B for individual discussion. I move that the Board of Directors approve a policy J B as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by me and seconded by Erica that the Board of Directors approve policy J B as presented. Is there any further discussion? Get close.
So on, for this policy and the additions that we have, is this again coming from OSBA? Or how, how is this happening?
The policy for J B is, is, is required by state law. JBB, which was the one you asked me about in our emails, is recommended by OSBA.
Okay, recommended by them.
But JBB is not what we're considering tonight.
No, we're considering J B.
And that was revised based on legal counsel guidance or whatever.
Absolutely, entitlement.
Okay. Any further discussion? Rose, can you call the vote, please?
Please, Alan.
Apologies, I was on the tab looking at it, just in case we were talking about it. I vote aye.
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 Oppose. Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Getting towards the end here. Okay, I believe Mary Kay, you are here for H E A. Not Melody, who's HCU today? Or is it Melody? Okay, great. We'll do Mary Kay first, and then we'll do Melody, sorry. Oh, do we need to get her a microphone? Do we take it from the?
Or is it a?
I think we distributed it over here. One second, sorry about that.
That one doesn't work.
I think the choir teacher knows away around, around the microphone a little bit.
Good evening, Chair Watson, Vice Chair Thomas, fellow school board members, Superintendent Scott, and administrative leaders. Jill Galley is unable to be here tonight, and in her absence, she has asked me to address the school board this evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mary Kay Babcock, and I go by Mary Kay. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm a proud educator of 25 years, with 21 of those years serving proudly the students and families of the Hillsborough School District. I'm also president-elect for H E A. It is my intention to continue the work of H E A with the HSD leadership, human resources in a professional collaborative manner. I'm honored to serve my peers in this capacity, and I'm ready to get to work. As I'm onboarding this new position as H E A president, my focus as an advocate for education, all teachers, and our students is how well I can support my members. It is important to me as a multiracial educator myself that our Black Indigenous people of color and LGBTQIA+ community members feel safe and supported. At this time, I want to acknowledge and thank you for your commitment to the recruitment and the retention of our staff to support them through this difficult era of teaching as we navigate the ramifications that predate the pandemic. As we know, the cost of living adjustment continues to rise at a rapid rate due to multiple, multiple economic factors. It is disheartening that early educators with master's degrees can barely afford to rent housing, let alone purchase a home in Hillsborough. We also know that workload is a crushing factor for many of our members and all educators across the country. According to a survey taken by our local leadership, more than 92% of educators report that their workload is so high that they cannot get it done in a regular workday. 27% said that they cannot get their done, their work done, no matter how much time they spend beyond their regular workday. Stagnant salaries for most of our qualified teachers, a 19% weekly wage gap between teachers and other college-educated professionals, combined with the culture of teacher blame, the inability to fully support the social and emotional needs of students post-pandemic, the lack of support for behavior issues, being left out of critical decisions that directly impact our programs, and increasing teacher workload with changes in curriculum, grading practices, along with the addition of past plans, have all taken a toll on our members. As a result, more now than ever, teachers are considering resigning or retiring earlier than expected. I only want to share this information with you to put a name and a face on everything that we're enduring. There is so much that I could share about what is impacting our members, but my time tonight is limited. I simply want to both thank you for the work that you've done so far in bargaining and urge us to find an agreement on the last few items that will help us all retain staff, recruit the best educators, and do the most good for our students. I also want to appreciate the continued support and efforts made in providing some relief to our members with the upcoming Staff Student Support Day on May 6th, as we close, as we work closely with our admin team to ensure opportunities for staff time to get their job done in ways that just can't happen during a typical student day. This time is invaluable to our educators, and we thank you. I'd like to end on a special upbeat note. We look forward to celebrating our teachers and our students by sharing information about what our association does to support them at our booth at the Proud to Be HSD Festival on Saturday, May 14th, in collaboration with the Hillsborough Farmers Market located downtown Hillsborough. We will be providing free books as part of our book swap to inspire and encourage the love of reading. Thank you to the teachers, parents, and friends of H E A for the book donations that enable us to encourage lifelong learners. Knowledge is power. I'd like to take this opportunity to announce and congratulate our H E A president, Jill Galley. She was awarded, she was recognized by the Oregon Education Association for the Ruth Gruner Membership Award. This award is granted to locals that successfully recruit and maintain members. It was an honor and a pleasure to present this distinguished and well-deserved award to Jill last week. I would be remiss if I didn't publicly thank the leadership of our current president, Jill Galley, and our consultant, Sarah Moskov. Their passion for service, their commitment to our members, and their tireless dedication to our association are met with heartfelt gratitude and appreciation by our members. We love you, and we thank you for your service. On a personal note, I would like to just say that there are prayer warriors lifting Sarah up in courage, strength, and healing as she deals with recent medical news. Thank you for welcoming me tonight. I look forward to working together in order for all H E A members to feel heard, seen, and acknowledged for their value, no matter what or where they teach or how they support students in the Hillsborough School District. Thank you.
Melody, are you available?
I'm here. Thank you. Good evening. To start, I would like to wish all of our teachers and licensed staff a Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. HCU appreciates all of the work that our teachers and licensed staff do each and every day. Our teachers put in countless hours, including after school, to make sure our students in our district have the best possible learning experience, and we are proud to work beside you. This evening, after over a year at the table, our collective bargaining agreement has finally been ratified by both the classified membership and this school board. Many thanks to this board for doing their part to complete this process. We appreciate your yes vote. Also, thank you to everyone that was at the bargain, at the table during this process. We worked through some tough challenges together to accomplish our goals. I would also like to thank the members of the union for being involved and taking an active role in this process. From their participation in the surveys that we sent out to attending the informational meetings we held, they stood by our team throughout this long process. All of the gains in our contract have only been possible by the collective efforts of those who participated and became involved, so thank you. In addition, a big shout out to the Century High School Kitchen Crew. They were able to get breakfast and lunches to the students despite their kitchen being flooded recently. Their level of professionalism reflects how deeply they care about the kids they serve, and so thank you. Lastly, as we enter these last few weeks of school, there are still a lot of important things to take place. We have, or we will, begin finals and state testing soon. Final projects, field days, and carnival events. Following all of these events, we move into graduation ceremonies. These events take the help and support of classified staff. The classified staff, as we all know, here are a few things that they do for our district. They clean it, cook it, fix it, drive it, paint it, type it, schedule it, plant it, file it, support, love and believe in our students. The classified staff keep the district moving. We are the first to greet students in the morning and the last to say goodbye in the afternoon. Our contributions are immeasurable. We do all of these things because we care about the students, but we are pulled thin. We want to do more to support the students that we work with. But it is hard when we only spend a few minutes in a class or we are asked to support a large number of students in classes. Some are even being asked to add new tasks and responsibilities to an already tight day. So please keep this in mind when you are building your budgets, creating your schedules and your calendars. Overloaded and stressed staff is not what is in the best interest of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody. All right. Board discussion time has a little bit different flavor tonight. Recently, some of us had the opportunity to attend the National School Board Association Conference and generally part of that involvement comes with you know, sort of a report out of what we learned and what we benefited from. So the four of us, we didn't want to jam it all in one day because we'd be here quite a while. So today Director Kim and Director Lopez are going to share their experiences. Who wants to go first?
Be happy to. Thank you. And I think I already shared out a few of my key highlights during the last meeting. But I, one of the things that I wanted to share tonight that really has stuck with me since we, since I attended NSBA was the idea of fostering a green light culture for our district. And how is it that we as a board are are doing that? And what I mean by a green light culture is how is it that we are guiding policies and really the governance structure to encourage innovation and creativity for our classrooms and at all levels where that trickles down to to really impact the classroom? Instead of just going going with things the way we are, simply because that's always been the way it's it's done before. I was very interested to learn that other school districts have what they call a chief innovation officer as a part of their cabinet, which was just such a mind blowing, mind blowing concept. But I think when I look at our school district, I really feel like each and every single one of our cabinet members hold a piece of that in their in their job title and in in the way that you navigate your work. And that's something that I very much appreciate to where we don't need a new position called the Chief Innovation Officer. But instead, we we can lean on you all to to find the new cutting edge way of doing things and to lead our district with with that creativity and innovation in mind. And so wanted to just really highlight my appreciation for our cabinet members here and the the culture that you set for the rest of our staff. So that really it's the the teachers and the classified staff who are in the rooms every single day, day after day, who is being supported by what we call a green light culture. And when I think about even my time on the board or really anyone's time on the board, you know, yes, we are entrusted to this seat by by the public. But oftentimes our time here is so short in the in the grand scheme of things. And when you think about even some of the tenure of some of our our staff members here, I mean, 20, 21 years, 20 plus years here serving in the district, that is the lifespan of these educators who are who are really the the unsung heroes of the work that we do as a district. And so after the NSBA conference and really the the lasting impact that it had on me as I engage my work as a board member has really been having that double check in my mind of saying of or of asking myself, how is it that I am I am holding myself as a board member accountable to to foster that green light culture for our district? And so that is a commitment that that I hope that I will be able to live up to and that I can make for our district as I partner with with all of the wonderful brilliant minds in this room to make sure that we are delivering the best possible education. End it with that and take it over to Director Lopez.
So I also, I think, shared last time a little bit of the highlights. I think for me, the biggest takeaway was really around our board governance and how to and just thinking about my time on the board and also how many years I have left and whether or not I decide to run again, but really kind of what I took from one of the sessions was really having a structure of governance for future board members that might want to consider being on the board and really explaining what the role and responsibility of the board is. And also having it be a way for people from the public to learn and understand what is expected of you if you want to be on the board? What are, what is our our cultural norms for for us as we engage with each other and with our administration and with our public and our families and community? And really actually lay those out so that it's very transparent, but it also sets the culture of potential community members that want to come in and participate so they understand what their role is going to be and what they're taking on when they sit in in these positions and how to ensure that we have a good relationship with our administration, how do we support our superintendent? And I think that is always the sort of, we have like our working agreements, but it's also a lot of it, it's kind of, it's like not spoken, but we kind of, you know, it's nebulous in that way and we all kind of know how to act and and be there. But I think more and more what what I saw, especially a challenge for a lot of school boards is how politicized the school board meetings have become, conversations and really just taking it away from the focus on students and more on personal ideologies. And so how do we create a government structure that really centers around kids? How do we accept kids as they show up in our schools? How do we make our environments inclusive? And and that's really, I think, for me, I kind of understood the calling of for us. That's that's the work that I would like to see us as in our in ourselves. And really only us can kind of repolice each other to help us work to have a good governance structure so that we can be a really effective board, because that's really what benefits our community if we are effective. If we know how to communicate with each other, how to run our meetings well, that shows to our public that we take this job really serious, we're good stewards and that we want the best for our students. And I definitely feel like that was one of the sessions that was the most packed out of all of them. There was like no seating room in that in that session. So I definitely felt that so many people, so many existing school board members were really struggling with this dynamic. And and it's disruptive and how it kind of takes away from our goal, which is education and like this is what we're here to do to help our kiddos. So I I hope that in our, you know, as we plan out, we I know we have our meeting in over the summer where we do our our board kind of development and a little bit of strategic planning of what we want to do throughout the year. But this is one of the other goals that we plan. So I'll be advocating for that. So thank you. And I just also want to say I know that H E A was speaking up here, just that Sarah is also in my thoughts and prayers and that lady is a force. So.
All right. Thank you, guys. Next session Nancy and I will share out maybe in the work session probably, right? Yeah, okay. Something impactful stuff for us, but thank you. Next up will be the students. Do you guys want to go then Seth or all right? Kayla, you can start and we'll go that way.
So this weekend, I actually got to go to Seaside. O A S C Spring Conference, which is the first one in a little bit. So it was so amazing. It was so fun. I got to hang out with a lot of different people, meet different people, interact with different leaders of different districts. And it was so different seeing how each their district is. And I just, I came back and was like, yep, we're the best ones. Yep. Just the reassurance, how diverse and how much we really celebrate our diverse student body and our diverse teachers as well and staff members. I just felt so proud and so happy to be part of such an amazing community. And just listening today again about, you know, making Juneteenth a paid holiday and then like even more expansion for the dual language program. It just made, again, I just felt so happy about being part of HSD and being able to see so so many amazing changes. I grew up in the dual language program, so I love it. I love every part of it, the family bond that you create, not only with students, but with our teachers as well. It's it's completely different. It's not something that you can ever describe because no matter in what position I am, no matter the like, even if not all the students that are part of the dual language program were with me at O A S C, I felt like they were. We had Spanish music playing and just the community that was built from that too was just amazing. And even earlier, I realized that a lot of the students that are part of the dual language program with me, it's an unbreakable bond. It's a family bond and I hope and I'm so glad to see that it's expanding and that more students will get the opportunity to have that. And you know, the traction that we will have with more bilingual teachers is going to be amazing because I wish I could take every class in both of my languages because as a bilingual person, you don't think in one language, you think in two. So even though you might kind of get an idea in one language, once you get in the other language, you might be like, oh, I know exactly what you're talking about because that's what happens to me. And I know that that will happen with more students as well.
Thank you. Michelle, you want to go next?
This is close enough.
Yeah, it sounds like we can hear you.
All right, perfect. So I feel, I think first I wanted to kind of add on to what Erica was saying. I think that we live in a world where there are a lot of people that are acting without empathy and without compassion. And some people in other places have brought that to the school board. And sometimes the school board becomes a very politicized place. But I'm, I think I'm very grateful that to come to Hillsborough where we are focused on students. And it's always about students first before anything else and that we stay focused on that and we stay effective and efficient on our goals. And I think that's something that I hope to see continue on forever in Hillsborough. And I have no doubt that it will. So I'm very grateful for that. And I think that, you know, like I was saying earlier, like our values, where we put our money, where we put like having a paid holiday for something, having like bonuses and stipends and stuff like that shows what we value. And I think it's important that we as a district, you know, value diversity, inclusion and equity. And yeah, so I think that's really good. Second thing is also a happy early Teacher Appreciation Week. I know teachers this year have been working their butt off like crazy and they've just been, you know, I really appreciate them a lot. They are the heart and soul of our schools. They're the blood that keeps the school going. And I think that they are super underappreciated. So thank you for the teachers that are here right now. And I think that like a lot of times, I know a lot of them feel like their work isn't seen. And I I would just wanted to kind of give a moment for them. And I hope that they, I hope that, you know, in the next week that they get more than just a card that says, thank you for everything you do because it's more than just everything you do. There's an endless list of what that really entails. So yeah, so I wanted to acknowledge, I I used to go to Arancow and I, for the the donations, I was really happy to see that they were going towards the library and the no Spanish books and stuff like that. I know that we're living in a very digital world and it's only getting more digital. But books are powerful. I think that literature matters. And I think it's, I'm really, really happy to see that $5,000 is going to books. And I I really, yeah, I like to applaud that. And then to kind of end, yes, today we had our an assembly at our school and for Eric Arancow, we had this cheer called G-Paws. And like, we haven't done it in like over two years. And like, it's like kind of like fun thing, but for me, like, it was really special for me anyway. Just because like I I like for once, the senior sec like class of 2022 finally won, like blew it out of the water. Like, let's go. Yeah, so I'm just really, you know, the sophomores will get it eventually. They'll get it. They're there. They'll grow, they'll learn. They're better than us when we were sophomores, but you know, it's okay. But I think like, you know, just I'm glad to see that we're moving back to this normal that we had before. Even if it's just like the little thing from G-Paws, like in a really weird way, it's so weird. I'm getting emotional over a cheer. And I'm not even like a huge on school spirit person. So yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Seth, do you have anything you want to add tonight? Oh, she typed something in the chat. You read that, Rose? I'm pretty sure she's also part of the winning class of 2022 as well. Mike, I believe you're up.
All right, thank you. Have had the option to continue to do school visits. Like I say, I feel each time it's the it's the best part of the week. With the exception of the board meetings, that's the best part of the week. But visiting schools is also a highlight for sure. So I I always appreciate the opportunity to see the students. Also would like to thank those folks that were involved in putting on the Career and College Pathways event last week. Just celebrating that work that has been done and the just the the growth that has occurred in that, the scope of that work over the last several years, absolutely amazing. We we got to celebrate that last week and I want to say two weeks before we were celebrating the opening of the aerospace space and building program. It's just remarkable the difference that that's making for students and the and the number of careers that they get to explore because of that work. We later this week, we're going down to see our Western Oregon University scholars. And for those of you who don't remember, those are the students that have identified themselves and we've we've actually talked to and encouraged to be bilingual educators. And we have a partnership with Western Oregon University and they get a tuition break. We we employ them during the summer. We support them during their entire time at Western Oregon. And many of those teachers, Kayla, you'll be glad to hear this, they come back to be dual language instructors for us. And we're just so excited to go down and visit those folks and to be ready to welcome them into our district and next year, many of them. Would like to thank a couple of people, the HCU, the ratification of the HCU contract. That is, that's big news and that's a result of a lot of lot of months of work. And I know that specifically Connie and Michelle have put many hours into that. Mark and Melody, thank you for your involvement as well. That is, that's a big hurdle and we're very excited to have that agreement done. And finally, I'd like to thank Michelle for her work with the Budget Committee. She's very deliberate about building understanding for that budget in the months preceding the vote. So really, by the time we get to the vote, there's a great deal of understanding and not a lot of not no controversy or, you know, really huge discussions because of the amount of work that's been put in in advance. So Michelle, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mike. Lisa, would you like to start?
Good evening. I don't have a lot tonight, but happy Teacher Appreciation Week. And I am very excited also about the HCU bargaining agreement. And also just thank you so much to Michelle and her team. On again, a great job as usual on the award-winning budget process that you take us through. So thank you.
All right. Erica, anything else you want to add tonight?
Also happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Special shout out to my first and fifth grade teachers who I always kind of remember. They're not from here, but acknowledge them because they did an amazing job.
All right. What do you get? Anything you want to share tonight?
I do, but can you come back to me?
Okay.
Come back to me, I'm still.
Okay. She anything else?
I do. I have a couple of themes. First, happy Teacher
First, happy teacher appreciation week. We love all of our teachers. I had the privilege of attending the Crystal Apple Award Ceremony. And oh, my goodness, it was just the most wonderful night. And seeing the business community and the education community coming together. And it was just a beautiful marrying of of that, those two two groups. And we are very fortunate to live in Hillsborough where we do have such a strong connection with our business community here. So just huge shout out to the Washington County Chamber of Commerce and the amazing thirty three nominees. Thank you all for for just being the bright light in many of these students' lives. Very well deserved. And from those thirty three nominations, there were ten award recipients. So just a huge congratulations to those ten. The last thing I'll share is just a quick shout out to to our bond program and it was featured in our weekly hot news. So thanks, Beth, for getting that on there. But it was the energy incentives that we were able to secure through some of our bond projects and on here. So the bond promise was that our project list would return at least four point three million dollars to the district's general fund. And we were pleased to report that we have already exceeded expectations by more than three hundred thousand dollars, which is just such a huge win and the incredible amount of care and attention that went into to all of that and that planning. So huge win, every little bit helps our general fund. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
You do anything like that?
I hope it's happy. I know a little girl that's gonna be making cards. Oh.
That's great. Monique, are you ready?
Yes. So.
Keep bringing the mic a little closer.
Yep. Thank you, Chair Watson. I have a quick question, follow up for COVID. I know that's not a popular topic, but we kind of had a leftover from that that I was curious about. I know that when we initially or the state went mask optional, that there were those in the district who were exceptions, who had another three weeks of testing. And I was wondering how all of that has panned out and where that stands today.
Just had a conversation about this over the last week and the their question really was, are we going to continue to require those folks with exceptions to wear masks? And and the answer is yes to that. We are going to continue that through the end of the school year. As we start to see cases on the rise again, it feels prudent to continue that process, at least until we get to the end of the year. And then as we go through the summer, we'll have additional information to to make a decision moving forward. But for the remainder of this year, we do plan to continue that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that follow up. I also want to say happy teacher appreciation week to all the teachers out there. And for all the presentations that we had tonight and especially, thank you Francesca for responding to emails and and others who do as well. I do want to say that I just want to remind everyone that I appreciate the cordialness of the disagreements or the that policy and such that we have. Just to remind people that I represent a different community that doesn't always see things the same way everyone else does. And they have a right to have a voice at the table. That disagreement is not disrespect. Emotions do not establish truth. God establishes true, and that's the point of view that I represent. I will continue to represent the members of this community who put me here to represent that. And I will do so to the best of my ability and respectfully as I can. If anytime you feel that I'm being disrespectful to you, please let me know. Because that is not my intent and not the the path that I seek. So I appreciate that from everyone. Thank you.
Anything you want to add tonight?
I wanted to say first, congratulations to Mrs. Babcock and we look forward to working with you. You are not the only prayer warrior in the room, so my prayers will go out for your colleague and her family as well. Some, I just have to say it, teacher appreciation week just doesn't cut it for me. It's like I want to, I want to come writing checks. I want to come giving, you know what I mean? I want to come bearing real gifts. I was trying to figure out, can I afford enough donuts? Can I, and I'm thinking about all the teachers, but I say that in all sincerity. And I say that to you from a person who has been in, I don't know, ten different cities and five or six different states. And and the teachers that I remember didn't like me in K through twelve and I'm okay with that. But it's amazing because all of that has come full circle because I am totally here representing children and you. And I just, I need you to understand where that comes from. There is no greater career in the world, there really is not. And I don't know which billionaire it's going to take to help us to change this. But I beg of you, your salary is not supposed to be indicative of our appreciation. Your salary is not indicative of our love for you. I, we said earlier today that I I really want to understand why we are, we voted on something that said that, oh, you bring in this much money for your district, but we're just going to give it to the other districts too. And that was part, that's part of the reason why we don't have enough money to give you and get you where you need to be. And I just wanted to say that because I I'm never comfortable when I hear people say, well, because you won't give me a raise. That doesn't mean you appreciate you. Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I have had some really positive experiences with the people who have taught my son since we have come to the Pacific Northwest. I have no regret in choosing the community of Hillsborough. So please understand, you are valued. You are appreciated and you are loved. And I just wanted to say that.
You also have a creation week. Some of my stuff kind of dovetails together, you know. Thank you for the NSBA report outside, I too was able to attend and I'll get into more detail later, but it, you know, it it's a good reminder of, you know, how important it is to, we're all very busy. None of us have any extra minutes in our day, but you know, the importance of sort of setting aside just a little bit of time when we can just to work on being a better board member. And, you know, many, well, I could say I I ran with the board, you know, with faith and love in my heart. And, you know, really, I'm a white guy in America, so of course I can contribute something, right? Like, of course, my opinion matters and I should do something about it. So, you know, but it, so you you run for the board often without understanding really what the job is. To Erica's point about, you know, understanding with the job is many of us didn't really understand. And now, you know, hopefully after five years, I have a little bit better idea. And some of that is doing the work of setting aside time to be a better board member. So I I thank the community for letting us go and I look forward to attending the Oregon School Boards Association Conference in July to work on that a little bit more. So, you know, hopefully I'll see somebody there. It's it's a great opportunity to, you know, just set aside a little bit of time and learn from your colleagues about the challenges in their districts and not around the country, be in this case, but around Oregon. And one hundred ninety seven school districts, one answer does not fit. So it's great to get the other senses of perspective. Dovetailing with that, Erica is the Chair of the Legislative Policy Committee and I thank you all for selecting me to choose on on that committee on our behalf. We met this past weekend to discuss legislative priorities and advocacy. And so to our to our partners in the room and to all the parents at home, this is going to be a somewhat pivotal year as we head into the, you know, we're heading into election season and in the fall and then in the spring, our legislature will convene to set our budget for the next two years. And they already realize that CSL, our current service level, is not our actual service level. They already start, they're starting to understand that we've been banging that drum long enough that they finally understand that when you say this, this number that we're allocating meets your current service. So we we'd love to give you more to do more things, but we just can't afford that. So at least you can keep doing the things you're doing and that's not the case for us. When you allocate what has been current service level in the past few years and for past decades, really, it is not, does not allow us to continue the programs we already have in existence. So we're starting to get traction in the legislature for people to understand that the flaw and how that is calculated. But it's going to take all of us, you know, on a bus. I think the last time I went, I wore a red shirt with all y'all. It's a pretty fun event. So it's going to take all of us down there. And and for what it's worth, I mentioned this upstairs too, that the the message may seem like it's the same message we've been doing for a while and that's true. But by best count, there's about twenty six new legislators in the Oregon legend, twenty six out of ninety are going to be people who have never been there before. So they need to hear from us about what it takes to effectively fund education in Oregon. So so I look forward to continuing to serve on the Let's Say Policy Committee, going to the Oregon School Board Society. I look forward to during School Board Session, convening the Rural Caucus, something discussing. So a a collection of rural school districts, bringing that perspective together, the the values and interests they share and how it overlaps with the, you know, interests of the rest of the state. So it it's a lot of great work going on. I'm glad to be a part of it. Thanks, y'all. I also want to just thank to like the business community, the Washington County Chamber, the Chris Lapp awards was just amazing. It was great to be back there and what a great room. And and so congratulations to all of the nominees and all the award winners on just a tremendous night. That's, I think I got one more thing, but we're we're good. All right. Eight forty five, not bad. All right. We, the, our board meeting is adjourned. Thank you.